Hello and welcome to this city council meeting, February 18th. We're so glad to see so many people here. Thank you for being here. Much appreciation. We're going to open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jirojigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And we didn't have closed session today, so if we could get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Here.
Mayor Burgel?
Here. And would all who care to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So in my mayor's announcements, I just want to highlight a few things that I was able to attend these last couple of weeks. So I attended the ribbon cutting for Lost Coast Communications. That is Lost Coast Outpost, K Slug, K Hum, no, not K Hum. K Hum, yes. A lot of different entities. We're so grateful that they're in our town. I attended a Eureka Street, Main Street mixer, fundraiser for Planned Parenthood with the Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence. All the fundraising went to Planned Parenthood. I did another ribbon cutting for Grossman and Hogg, certified public accountants. Did the Klan Beach Run. And I think one of the most fun things that I did was I went to Marble Weekend, and if you didn't get an opportunity, I would encourage you to go next year. I wanted to really thank Topher Reynolds and the Glass Garage for putting that together, as well as the Eureka Lodging Alliance, who funded a lot of the things that happened. So really grateful for that. And then yesterday, I went and stood in solidarity with some friends. My favorite part was the banjo player. We got to sing a lot of different songs, which is always fun to sing together. So that's what I've been up to. Probably a lot more, but I just, that's enough. And we will move on to presentations, code enforcement. Oh, one last thing. There's still time to donate to Mary Mycelium, our Bowl for Kids' Sake team, so if you want to support our local kids through Big Brothers, Big Sisters, we'd love to have your donation. So next up is our graffiti abatement update with Code Enforcement Manager Morgan.
Oh, sorry about that. I should have presented on the last one, but it ran a little late, so bear with me.
Mayor Burgel, we discussed a couple of items that were going to be pulled from it.
Oh, yes, we did. I'm sorry.
There's the presentation, as well as the one on the reports.
So we will be pulling I Too for a Further Agenda.
The recovery one?
No, they're here tonight.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Oh, my fault.
But not for present. They're going to speak during public comment.
My fault.
Thank you. Okay, so you're on, Mr. Morgan.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, I've been asked to present our graffiti abatement, pretty much like what's been going on over the last couple of years, because there's been some big changes. And in August of '23, we started this new graffiti abatement program on our main thoroughfares, which is Broadway, Fourth, and Fifth. And we got funding from the Eureka Lodging Alliance, the ELA. And we partnered with our local artist, Ben Galart, in assisting with color matching so that we didn't have a bunch of blocked out, different colors over the graffiti in these main thoroughfares. And to date, since August of '23, we've removed over 1,400 pieces of graffiti. And that's, that's just from them on their side, from the funding, from the ELA. Our code enforcement side, we're also working with the public and removing graffiti on our own. It's a little harder to track because of our, the way we put our cases in the system, you can either list it as just graffiti, or you can list it as a public nuisance. Most of the places that we end up having to remove this graffiti from have other issues that are not just graffiti related, so it kind of gets encompassed in that public nuisance portion. So it's kind of harder to drill in and give you an exact number from code enforcement or from not these thoroughfares, how many pieces. Just this year, we had, I think, 150 just graffiti cases that were solved. So those numbers are not in this, but this is just some examples of kind of what we've been doing. Obviously, this is, this one right here was off the main thoroughfare, but due to the complaints that we were getting over and over again, we've asked Ben and his crew to stay on top of this. And, and it's been, you know, it's been working out really well. And we also created this graffiti dashboard that we're working with Ben and his crew on, where they have a phone. They go out, obviously, I can give you guys all access to this. You can drill into each one of these dots, and it has, you know, it breaks everything down. There's even more drill down that we can go into, which it's like gang graffiti. There's a, there's a bunch of different options we can add in here. I just wanted to show you guys kind of what's been going on with it, anyway. Ben and his crew have been really awesome, and it's really cool to have an artist be able to help with it when we get things like this, where we've got profane language written on one of these boxes over someone's artwork, which really sucks. He's able to go out and color match it and like get it back to the, you know, the same way as it was put on in the first place. So, and they're usually on it. If I call Ben or his guys within, if I tell them that there's some sort of profane or racist comments written somewhere, they're, they're within the day, so. And we received more funding from the ELA this year to continue this program on. The future goal would be to secure more funding and make this a citywide program and not just our main thoroughfares, because you can go into the alleyways in a lot of these places and you'll find graffiti or not on the main thoroughfares. And we encourage the community to report graffiti, and if the public wants to report it, they can email us at codeenforcement@uricac.gov, or they can use the city's website to report a concern on the request tracker section of it. That's, that's what I got on graffiti abatement. If you guys have any questions.
And just for clarification, so this is all related to private property. Obviously, our parks crew, harbor crew, streets crew, code enforcement deal with a lot of graffiti that are on public spaces, parks, and those type of things. That's not included in this presentation. This is just the program that code enforcement has developed.
Thank you, and thanks for that great presentation.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. I was curious, you touched on that there are kind of two processes for cleaning up graffiti. You had said that there's kind of more benign graffiti, and then there's what would be considered public nuisance. So I'm curious how we differentiate between the two, or did I misunderstand?
Yeah, no, what I meant was like, usually we get drawn into a place that maybe has graffiti. Let's say someone makes a complaint about blight in a neighborhood, but it, the yard's full of debris or whatnot, and the fence, the shop, the garage, whatever on the property also has graffiti. So that, that encompasses like a public nuisance, not just a graffiti case. So it's a little hard to separate the two. That's, that's why I can't drill into it that hard.
Okay, yeah, no, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for these efforts. There was a team just across from where I was working today.
That's our team out there.
Yeah, they did such a great job, and I love that, you know, there were a couple of artists I knew that were working, so I love that they're employing artists who are also painters and talented painters to really kind of think about, like, the context and how to address graffiti in the most creative way. So thank you for that work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you as well. I appreciate it. It feels like a lot of it happens kind of in my ward, and so I really appreciate how quickly I've seen go, things go up and then come right back down. And I didn't realize that you guys had people helping restore the art. I just had noticed that it, I was wondering how that was getting taken care of. So I'm grateful you did that, because people put a lot of time into that and trying to beautify things, so I'm appreciative of that as well.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you so much.
Thank you, folks. Y'all have a good night.
You too. Okay, and next up, we have disaster and tsunami preparedness with Ryan Derby, our Humboldt County Director of Emergency Services. And Chief Citro. Welcome, both of you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. As you know, on December 5th, at 10:44 a.m., a 7.0 earthquake struck off our coast about 70 miles on the, out in the Triple Junction area. Fortunately, it didn't cause any damage really within the city of Eureka or the Great Eureka area, but it did generate a tsunami warning, which is standard for any what we call near-source earthquake event. A tsunami warning is standard. And at Humboldt Bay Fire, we were prepared and executed our internal policies on our response and how we handle it. And today, Ryan Derby, who's from the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office and the Director of the Humboldt County Emergency Operation Center, is here to discuss a little bit about how they play into the role. And then also afterwards, several weeks afterwards, we had a fairly large, what we call after-action review of the entire event with all the stakeholders from around the county in the operational area, including emergency services, schools, all the tribal governments, to discuss what their response was and how they handled it. And out of that came several points of improvement that we need to make, so we're here to discuss those with you tonight and see if you have any questions. So I'll give it over to Ryan.
To adjust this up a little bit. Well, good evening, and thank you for having me. As mentioned, my name's Ryan Derby. I'm the Emergency Manager for the County of Humboldt. And what that means for all of you is I'm your Operational Area Coordinator, which in that role, I'm the conduit between local government and the region for resources, information up and down what we call the standardized emergency management system, or SEMS, which you all are a part of. And I lead the county's Office of Emergency Services. So, that's cool. That one caught me off. We don't have that in the board chambers. So unfortunately, the day of the earthquake, I was actually traveling back from Sacramento, so I arrived in Humboldt County about 3:00 p.m. that day to find our Operations Center activated at a Level 2, which is a medium level activation. And our role at the County Office of Emergency Services, when we activate an Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, is to coordinate information and resources from local government, community service districts throughout the county, up to the region and up to the state. So as Chief Citro mentioned, that event on December 5th was what we call a near-source tsunami. I do briefly want to talk about the difference between near-source and distant-source tsunamis, because there are some key implications for what that means for public safety and response. As the name alludes to, a near-source tsunami is generated by a local earthquake along a nearby fault, and in those situations, we can see waves coming into Humboldt County within 10 to 15 minutes of the initial shaking. So in that circumstance, the earthquake itself is the warning. We can't rely on local alert and warning systems or sirens to notify the public of the need to evacuate. It's that strong felt earthquake that is their, their notification to evacuate by foot out of the tsunami, the tsunami hazard zone. Contrast to that, distant-source tsunami, as the name alludes to, is generated by an earthquake hundreds or thousands of miles away, such as one in Alaska, Japan, or Chile, in which case we'd have several hours to evacuate the coastline, issue emergency notifications, and stand up that public safety response to get people out of the tsunami hazard zones. Are there any questions on those two different types before I move forward? What my office has been really focused on the last couple of months is developing our after-action report, based on the after-action review that we conducted back in January. As a general policy, we try to complete after-action reports within 90 days post-incident, and we're coming pretty close to that deadline in the next couple of weeks. So what I'd like to do today, or this evening, rather, is just go through a few things that went well and a few things that collectively throughout the operational area we can improve on. I think number one thing that went well was public alert and notification. We had seven entities or jurisdictions within Humboldt County issue alerts that day. The initial alert was generated through the California Early Earthquake Warning System. That alert was essentially telling you that it's about to shake or it's currently shaking, and is intended to give you a couple seconds heads up, so you can duck under a desk, drop cover, and hold on. The second notification that went out came from the National Tsunami Warning Center. That was an automatic alert that was triggered by the initial size of the earthquake, which initially came in as reading at a 7.3 magnitude and was later reduced down to a 7.0. That notification from the National Tsunami Warning Center was the tsunami warning that went out using a system called WIA, or Wireless Emergency Alerts, that was sent out countywide to every resident that has a smartphone with emergency alerts activated on their cellular device. And then subsequently, we saw alerts come from the County of Humboldt, cities of Arcata and Eureka, Cal Poly Humboldt, College of the Redwoods, and I believe Bear River Band issued an alert for their tribal members as well. In addition to those kind of formalized emergency alert system notifications, there was a lot of social media being put out by local agencies, basically providing updates routinely on incident-related information, both in Spanish and in English. I can say proudly that this is one of the first times our Emergency Operations Center was able to staff our call center with both English and Spanish-speaking call takers and be able to provide real-time translation for the, the information that we're putting out outside of the initial notifications. Other things that went well, we found that communities that we've done past tsunami evacuation drills in, namely King Salmon, Fields Landing, Manila, Samoa, fared really well in the self-evacuation of communities, residents knowing where to go, where their high ground was, and evacuating by foot to those locations. And conversely, we found that communities where we haven't done that direct outreach struggled a little bit. We had residents trying to evacuate by vehicle, clogging up roadways, and causing people to be essentially stuck in their vehicle inside tsunami hazard zones for much longer than it would have taken them to walk out safely. We also found that local schools were engaged very early, issuing notifications to parents. Whether that was effective in keeping parents from going to their schools to pick up their kids is another question, but for those schools that are in tsunami hazard zones, they did a really good job practicing their emergency operations plans and getting their, their students up to high ground by foot. That brings up an area for improvement for all of us is educating residents, educating parents of the need to trust their school's safety procedures, trust their emergency operations plans, and know that their kids are safe while they're at school. We also found that some agencies that have it written into policy or have plans around tsunamis, put into practice not sending public safety personnel into tsunami hazard zones to conduct evacuation. That's something that, speaking for my agency, the Sheriff's Office, we had deputies going into tsunami hazard zones, and that's a point for improvement moving forward. It just comes down to education, outreach, both for the community and for local jurisdictions. One of the, the big challenges that we found countywide was kind of a lack of awareness of where to find the tsunami hazard zone maps, or an inability to access them. During the initial hours of the earthquake on December 5th, we found that the California Geological Survey's website that has the interactive tsunami hazard zone maps was unable to handle the level of traffic going to it and subsequently crashed, which poses huge barriers to those that don't know where they live in proximity to those zones, or where they work or recreate. But I've been assured from the state that that issue's since been resolved, that the bandwidth's been increased, and that issue hopefully won't be an issue moving forward. But on that note, I think something that's incumbent on all of us is to really push the message of where our tsunami inundation zones or hazard zones are within the county. City of Eureka actually has a very limited tsunami hazard zone, and when we see these maps being disseminated on social media and in national news media, local media, that show the alerting polygons rather than tsunami inundation zones, that can cause a lot of unnecessary panic in the community. So one thing that we're really focused on, kind of hyper-focused on right now, is community outreach and education, both in partnership with the city and with the Redwood Coast Tsunami Work Group, to get those maps socialized a little bit more broadly in the community and practice, you know, tsunami and earthquake safety. Those communities that I mentioned that do, or previously have done some tsunami evacuation drills, we're kind of changing the scope this year. And on March 26th, at 11:00 a.m., we're going to do the first-ever community-wide tsunami drill throughout coastal areas of Humboldt County. And that's going to be sponsored by the Redwood Coast Tsunami Work Group, involving Mendocino, Humboldt, and Del Norte Counties, and all the coastal communities that reside in those three counties, to really push earthquake and tsunami preparedness and give businesses, schools, and residents the opportunity to practice walking out of their zone, knowing where their high ground is, and knowing where those, those hazard zones are. Kind of as we move forward, the next steps for, for my office is to complete the after-action report, which is the physical document that lists all the strengths and areas for improvement, and I think most importantly, assigns tasks and an improvement plan to, to key members of our county staff to work on. And with this document, the, the improvement plan is really focused internally on the county's response, but it's something that we can certainly share with the city. So as you conduct future planning and look at your own preparedness initiatives, you can identify some of those key areas that internal procedures and plans can be updated at the city level. And that concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Moulton?
Hi, thank you so much for that report. That was definitely a big, lucky wake-up call for the entire community. My, my kid goes to school on the peninsula, and I can't tell you how many parents drove across the bridges to get there in the middle of what would have been a tsunami had it happened. So I'm really glad to see that lots of the structure is working the way it should be, and that more public outreach is happening. I have ideas for how to incorporate artists into a giant tsunami drill to sort of help people visualize on the ground where they are if they're in a tsunami zone. I think that the, the signs always stick out to me. Like, I clock those, because I don't want to get caught in a tsunami. But yeah, let's talk more. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you for the report. This was something that I asked for primarily because of what had occurred, and then this is, much like yourself, I was out of the area when it happened, but I had cellphone signal, so here are all these updates coming, and I'm like, I don't know what the hell's going on. And of course, you can only get ahold of so many people before the lines get jammed. And so I'm grateful to hear that there was more outreach available with bilingual staff and that translation. I'm curious if you can tell me more about what might be done in future alerts, if those go out in bilingual language as well. What was it, the wireless emergency alerts? Or are those just in English? If you could give me a little more detail on that?
Sure, so I can expand on that a little bit. On January 1st of this year, Assembly Bill 1638 was passed, or I guess went into effect, that requires jurisdictions that have 5% or more of non-native, or non-English-speaking population to provide emergency information in any language that meets that 5% threshold. So when we look at planning at the county level, we're looking countywide, right? And countywide, we're at about 3.5%. So we're just accepting it as a best practice to provide information both in English and in Spanish. In regards to the emergency, or wireless emergency alerts, those largely are coordinated at a federal level, and right now, they're only set up to go out in English. However, on kind of a county or local capacity, we're looking at kind of geo-targeting where alerts are going out. So if we know that there's a location in Humboldt County that has a large population of Spanish speakers, we can send subsequent alerts, really same-time alerts, in, in English and in Spanish. But in terms of practice, we haven't put it in, into practice yet. We're kind of in the, the planning and procedural phase. We have to develop a policy, get that approved through our legal counsel, and then implement it.
Yeah, and thank you. And what was, what Assembly Bill was that again?
Assembly Bill 1638.
1638, okay, I appreciate that. I didn't know about that. And then I'm curious if there's, trying to figure out how to phrase this, because if there is an immediate evacuation required, especially in the Old Town area, where you have, you know, shop owners, employees and such, and if the owner isn't on site, I guess, would you just have to leave that to guarantee your safety? I mean, what would be the best practice there, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Do you take the time to lock up, or do you high-tail it to the evacuation center?
Well, me?
Yeah.
I, I would, I would high-tail it to the evacuation center, especially with a near-source event. We're talking 10 minutes for the waves to start coming in, and if you're within an inundation zone, your life is more important than your business. And any business owner may argue that fact, but I would prioritize life safety over, over business and continuity.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate you saying it that way.
So, Councilman Fernandez, just to follow up on that. As Ryan explained, the communities that practice this are really good at it, and Humboldt Bay Fire, we've participated with those communities because they fall within our jurisdiction. But those are bedroom, small communities made up of mostly residential people. And what we discovered in Old Town is, is you have a combination of vulnerable populations, business owners, tourists, visitors, people just conducting daily business. And so how do you reach all those different types of populations in an area such as Old Town, which is basically our population center here within the city? So what we're going to do, I'm now on the Redwood Coast Tsunami Working Group. I worked my way onto it, and we're going to do serious outreach through the Chamber of Commerce, through Eureka Main Street, through, with the city of Eureka, us, Eureka Police Department. We talked about it today, about physically going into these businesses. You're talking Target, you're talking Costco, Pearson's, these large businesses, and talking to the management of these businesses and saying, here's the tsunami, tsunami map. You need to have a plan for your customers and your employees, and you need to execute it and do it at that. We, as the fire department or the emergency services, can't, can't really help them evacuate, but we can give them all the tools so they know how to do that. And that's what we have to do for those, for these near-source events, because they are quick. And like I said, within 10 minutes, we could have inundation, and that's what we need to do, is get people to understand that owned businesses or in town, you know, they need to have their own plan, but we're going to give you the tools to develop that plan and help you develop that plan. And the other thing we talked about today, too, and the things we're going to work on, for example, Old Town, if you just get to Forest Street, you're out of the inundation zone, so it's a two or three-block walk, correct? But what we discovered with these smaller communities is they actually have a direct point, a collection point where they all go. So maybe what we talked about today was saying, okay, for the Old Town part, let's, let's say, let's give you a specific location so everybody can go to it, so they know that that's just where they need to go to be safe. Instead of trying to get in their cars and leave, give them an actual site. Same for maybe the west of Broadway area, the Costco area, you know, just get across Broadway. Same for the Basra Mall area, just get up to Fort Humboldt and walk, things like that. Actually, give them designated places to go. There's not going to be evacuation centers per se, because it's a quick, rapid thing, but give them actual sites. And some of these smaller communities, like Samoa, Manila, Fields Landing, King Salmon, they have actual gathering places where they go. And then what that allows us to do as responders is we can now, in a safe area, go to these sites and talk to these people and find out, is anybody left? What are your needs? What do you need? After it's done, what can we do to go in and help you, those types of things? It helps collect people in a certain point. So all those things are in the works. We're going to be working on that type of outreach specifically to mainly Old Town and the larger businesses on the west side of Broadway Corridor, because I know that was a big concern, too, is you've got, you know, how many people shopping at Costco, right? You know, are they just going to walk out and leave? Yeah, that's going to be the expectation, you know? That's what you have to do.
Well, yeah, thank you for that, and thank you for highlighting, too, that the, the... And thank you for highlighting too that the induction zone you said is, yeah. So once you're past Fourth Street, so say, you know, my ward for the most part, Ward 3 Henderson Center out towards Lombard Hills, then just stay where you are.
Exactly. And that's the other thing is encourage people, you're not in the zone, so just stay where you are until the all-clear comes, you know? And then you can come and do what you need, because it's also important for us as emergency services to be able to get around and navigate these areas without jammed-up streets and cars going everywhere, people trying to get to their children in schools and things like that. So that's the outreach that we need to do more of within the city.
And you said that that's something that we'll be rehearsing to some effect on March 26th then, community-wide.
Yeah, that's going to be a really good initial test, and we're going to do a lot of outreach prior and see what kind of participation we get. You know, my plan is to be in the Old Town area and actually see it and see how it goes and talk to people and explain to them that this is what we expect. Yeah, and as a business owner, lock up really quick and just go, you know? And once you get the all-clear, you can go back. You know, it's the same thing for us. We're not going to go into those zones until we get the all-clear. And then we can go help you out and do what needs to be done. But you need to take care of yourself and your life first.
Thank you.
Anything? Councilmember Bauer?
No, I appreciate what you're both saying. This is about education. People need to look at maps, they need to be there for the outreach. But I'm also wondering if you couldn't geofence the tsunami hazard zone so that if your phone, the alert comes up, says, we know where you are, you need to go to high ground, you know, or something so that, I'm just saying that because I had people calling me saying, should I pick my kid up from Eureka High? And I'm like, you're so, they're so far from the tsunami zone, they should stay right there. Or Jacoby Creek, for instance, people were taking their kids. So we really got to focus on educational component, but I think like a geofence component, if it were possible, says on your phone, bail, or it says, stay where you are. You know, that would be a really helpful tool.
So I'm going to go a little bit nerdy on alert and warning technology real quick.
Go for it.
So when we use wireless emergency alerts, there's a set number of vertices that you can use on a polygon. You can't go beyond 99 vertices. And if you think about the coastline of Humboldt County, all those little pin drops would be well over 1,000. So that's with the Wireless Emergency Alert System, which when the alert went out from the National Tsunami Warning Center, it used WEA or Wireless Emergency Alerts. And they use their weather forecast zones, which go roughly 1,000 feet elevation within Humboldt County, well beyond where any tsunami, even your worst disaster movie is going to reach. When we use localized alerts outside of the WEA system, we can basically set infinite points on that map. The challenge is, you know, we want to educate kind of twofold, right? There's the immediate hazard on the coastline telling people of the need to evacuate, and then there's the secondary message for inland communities saying, don't go out to the jetty for yourself-y, right? Which unfortunately is a real thing that we have to deal with. But I think the key does come down to education. There's an interactive map, both through California Geological Survey, which is kind of mirrored on the Redwood Coast Tsunami Work Group, that you can access on your phone and see where you're at, if your location services are on, or you can type in an address and see where you are. And the zone is yellow on those maps. So if you're in the yellow, you're in a tsunami inundation zone. If you're in the green, then you're safe. So it's, I guess from my perspective, really just educating people where those tools are, how to use them, and understanding, you know, you say you're working in Eureka, your child goes to Jacoby Creek, which is also outside of the tsunami hazard zone, but you have to drive through two different zones to get there. And really letting people know, you have to plan in advance. You have to know where your schools and your businesses and your homes are in relation to these zones and not try and access them when that alert goes out. That's a totally different circumstance for a distant source where you have the time to do those evacuations or go check on different locations. But in a roundabout way, I hope I answered your question.
Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Yeah, what I was wondering is, you were talking about our inundation maps and kind of like where we can predict things are going to go. And I was curious, I mean, I'm assuming that's based off of a certain size of event and a certain location. I'm just curious what that's, you know, I'm thinking like airbags, right? They're safer for men than they are for women because they're, you know, calibrated off of a certain size and height and that kind of thing. And so I'm just kind of wondering like, what is the calibration, I guess, or like what are, and is it possible that it can go up and over that? Like, is that tsunami zone like for sure? Or is that based off of like, if we don't go over this size of an earthquake or, anyway?
So to address that question, in Humboldt County, we're on kind of the southern end of what's called the Cascadia Subduction Zone, which the big threat for us is a 9.0 magnitude mega-thrust, right? And the tsunami inundation zones or tsunami hazard zones is the new phrase that we're using, is designed to meet and exceed that 9.0 mega-thrust earthquake. So if you've heard of a 50-year, 100-year flood, our inundation maps are based on 1,000-year tsunami scenario with some of the most coastal communities out on the peninsula based on a 2,000-year scenario. So based on the newest science, the LiDAR data that they aggregated in 2020 to put into these new maps, I can say we're fairly confident, there's no such thing as 100% certainty, but we're fairly confident that those maps are going to hold true for the worst-case scenario that we will see on the North Coast.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
All right. So this leads us to the public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or a portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Time allotment for public comment on non-agenda items. A maximum of 30 minutes shall be allotted to receiving public comments at the initial public comment period. If necessary, an additional period shall be allotted to public comments after city manager reports, but only if the first 30-minute public comment period was not sufficient to all those who wish to speak to do so. So I know we have some people here for public comment. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. My name's Jessica Conde Repolds. Many of you guys up here know me. My name's, I'm here with Danette from where is she? From Recovery Happens in Humboldt. And we're here to just give a little appreciation to Miles and the KATE program. I don't know if you guys know this, as city council members, but Miles was really nice to us and found a way for us to be able to feed 50-plus people at Mother Bernard's House here in Eureka. And let me tell you guys, when these people came in to just have a warm Thanksgiving meal, it just makes the world of a difference from knowing that they're going to have a really rough day because it's Thanksgiving, they feel forgotten to having a warm meal and knowing that someone truly cares for them. So thank you, Miles. And we really appreciate it, and we hope that we can keep working together in future years to come and, yeah.
So my name is Danette, and I, you know, I'm going to continue with the gratitude as I try to wake up every day and have a little gratitude for this world that we live in. And this is for you, because you were able to help with the Thanksgiving feast at Mother Bernard's. You know, a lot of times, you know, we forget when we put people in housing that, from my experience anyways, we don't have a lot of experience being sociable. And so for me, and the house that I grew up in wasn't a very sociable house, but I learned that food is my love language. And so we were able to share some love for people that didn't feel as much as, as much love as others do. And so I just want to continue to be able to share a message of hope and gratitude for everything we do in our community. Thank you.
And just so you guys know, this all started because I'm currently working there, teaching free nutrition classes that comes with a cooking component, and that's how I entice them to come to my class. And sitting with Danette and another friend of mine was, I was like, so what happens during Thanksgiving? Do they get like a Meals on Wheels? Does someone come? And they're like, nope. They just, they're kind of on their own. And just so you guys know, there is no grocery store near them. Most of these people are spending their CalFresh dollars across the street at a gas station, so not very healthy foods are available. And sometimes with our weather, it's not feasible to get to one of the locations in our community that's providing a meal. So again, thank you, Miles, for doing this for me. When I found out they didn't have a meal, I was like, let me make some phone calls and pull on some heartstrings. And I got Miles. Thank you, guys.
Thank you both. Okay, just sidebar, I'm sorry, but in public comment, we don't clap or shout out or yell or anything. And the reason for that is we want everybody here to feel comfortable. I know that felt really good and I appreciate you being here and all the good things that happen in our city. But during public comment, again, we want everybody to feel safe and that they can share what they need to share. So please, you can do this, you can do this, do what you want, but please do not make noise. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, y'all. It's been a while. I've been very busy still trying to serve people who are living outside, and I just want to talk to you a little bit about that. Your CSAT officers have been very busy lately with their pickup trucks filled with trashcans. And they seem to be most aggressive in taking away and throwing away people's tents, sleeping bags, tarps, blankets, jackets, anything they might need to survive out there. Parking enforcement is also especially rabid during bad weather, taking away people's vehicles and everything in them. In doing your bidding, they're taking away any little bit of shelter people have left, taking their documents, their phones, their medications, any hope of progress toward housing, finding and keeping jobs, or receiving much-needed social services. I'm seeing people running around with little clothing, sometimes no shoes even, who are hypothermic and have the beginnings of frostbite, and there's nowhere I can take them to get relief indoors. Even on the rare occasion that they have awareness of and access to an emergency shelter, there is never enough space for the hundreds and hundreds of people who are unsheltered in the city. I'm hearing your plan is to penalize people in hopes of pressuring them to seek recovery and mental health services. As it stands already, all the recovery programs have long waitlists. And once people graduate in one to three months, they're sent right back to the streets, unless they're lucky enough to get into a sober living house for maybe six months, and then they're sent right back to the street. It's like pulling teeth to get behavioral health services up here, and it almost never results in housing or any kind of stability. After the more than $7 billion the state of California spent on addressing homelessness, I know that many people are under the impression that those who are still outside are there because they choose to be, and that's absolutely false. That money was spent incredibly wastefully with so much greed and corruption involved that only a tiny fraction of the unhoused people in this county got a roof over their head before it was gone. The only way people are getting into housing at this point is for someone else to be evicted and sent back to the street. And now you're planning to approach those people with more teeth? I understand you got the green light from the Supreme Court to come down on people in this way, but just because you can doesn't mean you have to or you should.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, City of Eureka. I, my name's Joanne McGary. I live in Arcata. But I really do appreciate being able to come here on occasion to see how you folks operate, which oftentimes is quite different. And I do have to say, I'm impressed by the seats being filled behind me here with concerned citizens speaking up. So I want to talk a little bit about history. We have in Humboldt County and Eureka and Arcata, some interesting history about things that have happened here that have been pretty horrible. I think we celebrated 100, not celebrated, but recognized 140 years ago, the Chinese expulsion just recently. And we're living in the 21st century now. I participated with a bunch of other people yesterday in making history, being in solidarity at the courthouse on issues that are concerning us. And what I would just like to share with you now is what I've been trying to encourage my city council in Arcata to consider, but they don't have to be alone in this, is the idea that we're all connected in the world. And what happens here can happen elsewhere, and what people do in solidarity happens all over the place. And one of the things that exists in the world are organizations, international organizations for peace, organizations against violence, non-violent cities. And finally, there's a Charter for Compassion. And I really like to think that our communities in the 21st century, in 2025, in a time where we really need to identify who we really are in the community, and dedicating ourselves to peace, nonviolence, and compassion, however that needs to be expressed locally or elsewhere in the world, or globally, or regionally, or whatever. International cities of peace exist out of Dayton, Ohio. The Nonviolent City Project exists, and the Charter for Compassion, a beautiful document that came out of Karen Armstrong's TED Talk Prize. So those are three things I will be sharing with the council here. I've shared them with my council. It would be great for Eureka and Arcata to be twin cities for peace, nonviolence, and compassion. And the final thing I want to do, since I did it to the County Board of Supes and to the City of Arcata, is tell the quick hummingbird story. Forest fire, all the animals rush out of the forest scared, shivering, not knowing what to do in emergencies. And the hummingbird goes to the water source and flies back to the fire and keeps doing that. And they say, why are you doing that? And he says, because I can, and I'm doing my part, and I'm being brave.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Hello and welcome.
Thank you. Greetings, councilmembers and mayor, and you as well. At the end of last year, I left here and went to two different states where I lived in a women's homeless shelter. One shelter had 100 women and 300 men. The other shelter had 300 women and children. No one knew why I was there. I lived among them as if I too was homeless. My goal, share the gospel message with those God led me to befriend. The most common thing I encountered in both shelters combined was hopelessness. I have since discovered, like our city, these two cities did the bare minimum to combat the hopelessness found within our homeless communities. But I really do not blame the cities. The blame is placed on the church, whom God has anointed to bring hope to the hopeless. For the church listening to this, how are we doing with this assignment? I will end with my poem. Where are you going, child? I am going to go set the world on fire. There's a message, a message that burns within my soul, a message that brings hope to the hopeless and sight to the blind. This world ain't ready for your message you got? Well, I would rather be opposed by the world than to be opposed by my God. For Christ came to the world to save sinners, of whom I am the worst. However, for this reason, I have obtained mercy. So I will keep going, I will keep speaking until I have seen His promise fulfilled. For the earth shall be filled with the knowledge of the glory of the Lord as the waters covers the sea. The end, and Lord bless you all.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Hello, and thank you. I've come here to speak for those who can't, and place the members of our community who do not have the means or energy to fight back when surviving outside is a battle in of itself. However, it seems that these members However, it seems that these members of our community are not being seen or treated as such. Somewhere down the line, while chasing the desire to clean up our streets, you seem to have found it easy to ignore that you are uprooting lives. It's not about the appearance of our city. It's about the minorities in our community that you wish to rid. It's about the fellow human lives that you are toying with. To my understanding, you are intending to punish outdoor camping as a misdemeanor. Therefore, you are fully intending to punish houseless people for simply existing. Because where do you expect them to go without a home? Being homeless is hard enough. Why add the difficulty of also being a criminal? I am astonished by the lack of understanding and compassion we are showing to fellow human beings.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Well, thanks for having us. I'm here to speak about accountability. Before you consider putting your efforts into criminalizing and demonizing a population of people that are experiencing houselessness, most of which by statistics are experiencing co-occurring disorders, being mental health and substance use disorders. And this, there's really no accountability for the organizations that are squandering and through corruption and like the amazing amount of money that is being spent for the little amount of resources that are given to these people is criminal. And before you take and put your efforts into criminalizing and demonizing the people that need the help, remember that you're in a position to hold the people accountable that are supposed to be making that an easier like time. And people, there's, there's not enough housing in this community. Like there are organizations that are supposed to be, through the funding that they're receiving, giving people resources and hold them accountable and hold yourselves accountable for how you treat the situation moving forward. And remember that people that need the help the most are the people that are being abused the most. And by making it easier for people like, uh, or harder on people like the police and mental health resources, uh, hospitals and facilities, like how about putting some energy into being accountable yourselves and holding people accountable that are misusing these, the funds that are being given? Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. If you do want to speak, you can line up if you'd like.
Hi there, everyone.
Welcome.
A lot of people, thank you. A lot of people are going to be talking about the camping problem. I just want to say, I'm a nurse, and I know every single one of you are one bankruptcy away from being homeless. So when you make your decisions, please remember that. It could happen to me, and it can happen to anyone. And if I'm on the street and I can't find a place for shelter, and I have to camp, you're going to be punishing me. And you're going to be charging me money for that. Remember, it can happen to every one of you. So please remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, come on up. You're welcome. And welcome to you.
You know, I just wanted to bring up a few points about what's going on out there right now. Okay, I've been watching for quite a while. I know pretty much everybody out there. I know most of the law enforcement officers that are out there as well. And, um, there, I, I don't know who, who y'all think you're helping by taking everybody's stuff. What you're doing is you're creating more crime. Okay, you walk into somebody's camp and you strip them of everything they got, and it's thirty degrees outside. What are they gonna do? They have no money. They're gonna go commit crime to survive. It's a game of survival out there. You guys got to understand that. They're trying to survive out there. When they take somebody's car, who's living in their car, they're taking their home. That's their shelter. That's how they keep warm. That's how they're staying alive. Okay, camping is for people that have homes that want to go rec- recreation. Okay, we're not camping out there. Okay, what we're doing is we're trying to survive out there. And every time they take something from us, it costs us more money. You know, if you got two hundred and fifty people out there that all collect disability, let's say, they all get a thousand dollars a month. And you run them out of town, you're taking away two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of this county every month by running them out. And we're having a hard enough time as it is. Now that they legalized pot, there's no pot money in this town. This town survived on probably about sixty percent of pot money. Nowhere, everything's going under. The malls closing, McDonald's is taking food stamps. I mean, how much force do you have to make it? You guys might be out of a job. There might not be a Humboldt, there might not be a Eureka left. If you guys keep going with all of this. We need to figure out a way to make some money. There's way better ways of handling this whole, homeless situation. There's a bunch of houses out there that Betty Chin built, and nobody's in them. Governor Newsom was given, I don't know how many millions of dollars to create small housing communities for the homeless to be in. Not one's been built. But they want to run around. It's like what Child Support did back in ninety-one. They put out a whole enforcement program with no resolution process. Screwed up a whole bunch of spaces. People were losing their jobs because they couldn't drive to work. Then this is exactly what's going on right now. They got a whole enforcement program out there with no resolution process. People still waiting to get housed. I had a lady that said that she was going to be like my, my worker to help me get housed. Okay, I'm on disability. I cut off my left hand. Okay, they put it on. It doesn't work as good as it used to, but it's there. At any rate, I had a lady that said she was going to help me with housing. But I had to go to a mental doctor and be diagnosed as crazy, more or less, before they'd give you housing. Yeah, I don't want to do that. I'm not crazy. I'm just living on disability. And that's what it comes down to.
Thank you for being here. We'll see you next time. Come on up, young lady. Okay. Hi.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Quentin Bell. I own a business called We Shine Together LLC. And I think I came up with a solution to how we can do the, uh, help the homeless problem. And that's basically by employing them to sell health and beauty products and restoring abandoned properties. I'm going through a heck of a court battle for that, but that's okay. It'll be handled. And, um, uh, basically giving somebody the hand up, you know, the saying goes, if you give a man the fish, they'll eat for the night. If you teach him to fish, they'll eat for the rest of their life. So giving people that want to change the opportunity. I read a book from Napoleon Hill called Thinking to Grow Rich, and that book is very powerful. The points, his philosophy and his principles in that book has been proven to work for people. And that's why I implemented those principles into my business. To, 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 I'm not asking the city for any money or anything like that. I'm not doing anything like that. I'm just letting you guys know. It's on the way, and I'm hoping the city can support the cause because it's really about helping all of us out. And that's all I need to say. Cause we can come up with positive solutions instead of not. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome. Thank you for having me. I'd like to echo, um, talking about positivity. So looking at the positive consequences of the things that we do. And so, hearing that the changing Oh, sorry. It's okay. I want to, yeah, can y'all hear me? Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, changing public camping and sitting, um, lying city ordinances. So making it a punishment. Um, it's really unfortunate nowadays that it's a, we live in a culture where, um, we don't do our research. There's so much research that shows this isn't going to help. And if we're talking about being in community with each other and making like things look better, right? If this is supposed to help, it's not going to. And there's so much research. There's so much research that shows that. And so I really encourage y'all to do the research, to talk to people. If you don't know someone, you know someone who knows someone. Talk to them about how this will affect them. Sorry, I'm nervous. And I, so I work for, um, DHHS. I'm new. And part of my program is we, um, could write referrals for housing for families. And one of our programs, HSP, they're taking recommendations. They're not really, um, they don't have the capacity to help anybody. That's one of the three programs. My program, we can do, you know, a couple of things to help with, um, housing. And one is already out of the picture. And so this idea of affecting people and their housing, like already, like countywide, we're losing resources. And so I really encourage y'all to do some research and follow through with what's good for the community, not necessarily what we feel will look good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Come on up. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name's Brandy. I have been a Humboldt County resident for my entire adult life. And I have had a lot of people I know who are unhoused die over the years. And I've seen the city council do a lot of nothing about it, which is really devastating. And you would think that people freezing to death during the winter or dying because they jump into trash compactors to stay warm would kind of be a concern or, um, uh, worrisome, but it seems to be the opposite. And it seems that doing things that enable people to freeze to death are just kind of escalating. And I think that if I had to publicly serve a community and say, I don't care about that, I'm gonna do nothing, I would be so embarrassed. I don't understand, like, how that is not the most shameful, humiliating thing in your guys' lives. I am, you know, I've been here for a long time, and I know you all have too. And I know some of you frequent Old Town and are there every day. And I know you guys would notice if some of those people who are unhoused, who you see every day, suddenly disappeared. But it seems like you wouldn't care because nothing is changing. And I also, like someone who spoke not too long ago, I also have a solution. And it's to, um, give a fuck. I don't know. I don't think that should be controversial.
Thank you, Brandy. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to, um, speak in public comment? Come on up. Welcome.
I wasn't gonna speak. Last time I was in front of city council was in San Francisco. So those guys all know me by name. I've worked with the homeless population, unhoused population from Boston, Flagstaff, Slab City, the Tenderloin. You guys have a chance to be heroes. You, you have a chance to be innovative, get creative, and set the tone for other cities and towns that are this size to take care of this problem. Like, just sweeping people out is not the answer. You know it's not gonna work. My concern now, aside from what's going on in, in Eureka and Arcata as well, is that, uh, federal housing is on the chopping block. So it's not something new that you all know what's coming down or what could come down, right? If federal housing gets yanked, you guys are gonna have your I mean, your jails won't hold all the people that you're giving out tickets to, you know, and misdemeanors can add up when you don't show up to court, blah, blah, blah. They can get to be felonies if you don't treat them properly, and then you can never get housed. You can never get a student loan. You have a chance now to really get creative and do something about this problem. I have some ideas. I, I'm afraid to say them out loud because they sound crazy. I lived overseas for seven years in Cambodia, and slums, if you give people land, they will build on the, on that land. And they will police themselves. They will start businesses. They will take care of each other. Then all the services can be in one place. The way it's scattered right now is crazy out there. I see it, you know, everywhere. I'm retired now, uh, cause I burned out. But really, you need to get creative and innovative. You have a chance to be heroes. For the rest of the country to look at you and say, look at what Eureka is doing. Look at how it's working. You have to get creative and think outside the box. Sweeping people up, taking their stuff, putting their dogs in shelters, taking their trailers, it's not the answer. It's like the drug war, right? It's, it's a losing war. It doesn't work. We all know that. The war on the unhoused community is the same thing. It's a losing war. You, you have to get creative. That's all. Think about what you're doing, what you're doing to people, and try to be a hero instead of what's happening now. Cause that's nothing hero about that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is any, there anyone else in chambers that would like to comment? Seeing no one, it looks like we have some people on Zoom.
Some dude.
Hello.
Welcome.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Cool. I was just wanting to pretty much uplift everything that everyone else is saying, that this measure to ban camping, doesn't really do anything to help. It actually just harms. And again, it's like doing nothing to help. It's just harming, and it's harming people. It's harming people in our community. And it is just seemingly stemming from like a lack of like empathy. Like, don't get me wrong, y'all seem to have sympathy, uh, but you're lacking empathy, like the ability to see that like this could be you and you could be in their place. That these are like, you know, people who are struggling with, uh, being unhoused are people who don't deserve to just be pushed around and policed and imprisoned. And yeah, this measure just seems really harmful and awful. And I think if you look at like statistics from all over the country where these camping bans have been happening, they do nothing but hurt. And I just don't see why you would want to continue to do hurt, um, and to harm like this community with like measures like this. Yeah, unless like you don't, I don't know, you don't see these people as community, which is just like untrue. It's just like so false. It's like, I see people at like three AM, like collecting like CRV, like these are all people who just want to live and survive and are busting ass to like live and survive. And you just want to continue to criminalize and punish and penalize. And it's just really sad. And it makes me sad to play, to call this place home and to see this keep happening. And yeah, I kind of just want to see like what that person said is just more care, more caring at all. Uh, more actually working for solutions. And yeah, giving, again, uplifting what they said, giving more of a fuck and caring about people in our community and listening to what other people have to say too, like, I don't know who thought this camping ban would be a good idea, but it's definitely not someone who's struggled with being unhoused. So, um, yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have time for one more speaker.
Okay. So we do have time for one more speaker, and then, um, we will continue public comment at the end of the meeting. So it looks like Sarai?
Sarai. Sarai.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted definitely like uplift everything that folks are saying. Um, and for Audrey Lord and Toni Morrison's birthday, I'm gonna, my comments are in the form of a poem. For Audrey Lord and Bernice and Janette Bordeaux, for Toni Morrison, for Sylvia Winter, for Marsha P. Johnson, for Kate Rushin, for Grammy and Johnny Anne Lacey, Auntie Mary Big Mom, for Amanda Jane, Lord, this poem could be a list for missed. This could be its own agenda. An application I'm filling out has a question on it that says, and then asks, you will be an ambassador for the city of Eureka. What is your relationship to the city and why do you think this position is important? I get ready to list my seventeen jobs digestively and connect that to this, to that position, to sacred treasure, to saving grace with so-called decorum and tact. Values leaked over from so many numbers of slaughters made ironic by land acknowledgements. Heartbreak reinforced by actions in this chamber. Then something enters my brain where I start to see this relationship with the city like a mutual haunting. One I've chosen, entered a pact into with, we're working on it every day. It's the way there's always a whisper of work to do. The way whispers turn into yells, like issues turn into yells and to our needs get turned into yells in this chamber, in these meetings. The city's ghosts in this haunting ask me, they're awake now, smiling. What is your relationship to the city? What is the city's relationship to me? What is the city's relationship to us? What is the city's relationship to the land? What is the city's relationship to you? They pause. What is your relationship to you? They pause. What is your relationship to you, to folks just trying to exist? Is the city aware of its breathtaking haunting? Of its beauty in the backroads where I still know not to go? Does it know, does it want everyone to be whole? Does it see everyone as a whole human? Mother, father, god, this poem will be a list of action items and feedback loops and agenda. What is the relationship like with the city, my ghost in haunting ask? I love it to life and close enough here to grieve its losses, to see its pain. It's also confusing and infuriating though, exhilarating, magic, spooky like a haunting. Remember, I chose this. We keep choosing this each day, keep adding here, can't clap in the meeting, but still finding a way to connect to the drum, to community, to keep each other safe, to keep myself safe with integrity, decorum intact in each of these spaces that I'm in. I don't have one relationship to the city. I have many. I have so many and many more to build. So many and so many ghosts, so many hauntings while I'm walking around here, new, alive, stri- struggling, trying not to be erased, trying to make sure that we are not.
Thank you, Sarai. Your three minutes are up, but thank you for being here. And, um, I'd like to thank everybody that commented this evening. We will be resuming public comment. Um, we have a couple of people left at the end of the meeting. So we are now going to close public comment and open the public hearing. Um, so we are having the mid-year update to the fee schedule with Director Millar, Finance Director Millar. Welcome, Director Millar.
Good evening.
Before you begin, Director Millar, could we either close the door or, um, if friends could be quiet outside?
It's, he has a minute before it comes up.
No, I'm talking about outside of the doors. Thank you. Oh, great. Okay. Thank you.
So, good evening. Uh, tonight's public hearing is to update the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five fee schedule. Uh, every fiscal year, the fee schedule is brought to the city council, um, to get updated. And then typically, once a year around the middle of the fiscal year, we come back with any changes or additional updates to the fee schedule. Tonight's update is relatively limited. Uh, we have requests from the Development Services Department and the Engineering Department. Uh, these bullet points highlight the new fees. Uh, there are some changes to the descriptions of fees. Uh, but this really captures the, what I would call material changes today or tonight. Um, so we have two fee, or two new fees in Development Services and then three new fees in Engineering. Uh, two of those fees are related to the city's sewer lateral program. And then the other one is part of their, uh, parking program. So, uh, my recommendation tonight is to hold the public hearing and then to adopt the resolution uh, of the city of Eureka establishing, uh, the fee schedule.
Hi, Councilmember, time for questions. Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Director Millar. Uh, I, I know a number of people here, um, are, have questions or concerns about the sewer lateral fees. And so could you, um, just go into a little more detail, the, the reasoning behind these changes? As well as, I know in the past, we had an opportunity where, you know, where people kind of bought into different city programs and things in order, you know, in order to cover those fees, kind of just to change in what has happened in the past versus where we are now and kind of like why the changes are being proposed.
I'm gonna pass this over to City Manager Slade.
Thank you, Director Millar. Millar, and good evening, Mayor and Council. So yeah, as council's aware, this has been a very long process with our sewer lateral ordinance. We initially started off the program, um, as a result of our permit and our wastewater permit and what goes on with that. There's been many renditions. The most recent rendition is coming to you with an update to the ordinance for kind of out of the ordinary situations when we talked about commercial. This applies for both commercial and residential, but, um, the update to the ordinance that happened recently, and that's one of these fees here, is the one that's based on cost, is related to, um, initially for commercial projects, if we're on Broadway and they need to get this pro- transaction done prior to, excuse me, they have to get the sewer lateral replaced prior to the transaction being complete. We were coming up with issues related to getting Caltrans encroachment permits, those type of things. It takes such a long period of time. It passed escrow, they fall out of escrow. And so for those unique situations, which are typical to that, but there can be other unique situations, when that happens, it gives the city engineer the leeway to not require that right at the time of purchase and come up with an agreement with the seller so that it gets done within a certain period of time. Um, that's one of these fees here that is basically determined by the cost. The other fee is related to the lower laterals, and I believe all of you are on council. When we used to, when we had folks replace the lateral prior to the transaction occurring, we had the property owner responsible for both the upper and the lower lateral. Um, we were finding that it was being difficult for homeowners to get the lower lateral done because it requires a different contractor's license, and there's not many of those folks around here that can do that. So at that point in time, we amended the ordinance so that the city would establish a program where we put these out to bid on an annual basis. We've been doing that for about three years now. When we put them out to bid, we get an annual cost of those and get an idea of an average cost for each one of those laterals. So we did that. The, the rate was established at eight thousand dollars for those lower laterals. Um, after having experience with these laterals, now what we're seeing now are there's certain properties that skew that average. What's happening is some of those lower laterals are deeper than others. So shallow, shallow lower laterals typically are around eight thousand. The deeper lower laterals are costing more money. And I wanna be clear that the city is subsidizing this program at twenty percent. So the cost of all of this, they're, they're covering twenty percent. So we take that off and then we do these averages. The reason for the deeper lateral costs is because the contractor's having to comply, comply with OSHA, and so that threshold is below five feet. Once you get to five feet, you have to provide shoring. That shoring increased the costs in order to do those lower laterals. And so staff thought it was more equitable to not have those folks who aren't costing the amount of those laterals, to separate that out. And so what we're doing is we're separating that out. A shallow lower lateral is still gonna remain at eight thousand dollars a square, I mean, uh, per lateral as a, as a fee. And the deeper lower lateral is gonna remain at twelve. What this does is it prevents the overall cost for everybody going up because these lower laterals are costing people more money. And so that's the reason behind this is because the costs over the years, and just so we're clear, um, everybody who's gone through this process and is in the queue and all of those things will not be affected by this. It's everything going forward. So what's happened is we get close to two hundred of these a year, believe it or not. And so we have a stockpile of stuff that hasn't been done yet. So we're not going back and adjusting for those people that are in the queue, getting ready for their project to go out to bid and get done. So this will be for everything from this point forward. So those deeper lower laterals, which I had to start, I was saying lower, lower laterals, but their deeper lower laterals are separated out from the more shallow lower laterals.
So, and I have a couple more questions, but that's it. Um, so what you're saying, if I can just kind of reinterpret that, is that, you know, most folks are still gonna pay that eight thousand dollar fee. And actually having a separated out fee for the deeper lower laterals will, will help keep that eight thousand dollar rate available for most folks who have, let's say, normal ladder, lower, normal lower, lower laterals.
Exactly. If we were to do this average without doing that, that fee for everybody overall would be more, and it's hard to do that because the higher percentage of those laterals are shallow. And so the thought process, similar to those one that are non-standard, was to separate those out, make those be twelve thousand, and it's a clear criteria of five, uh, of five feet that you have to go down. Um, there's not a lot of those. I mean, I think you can tell by the geography of a property that you're there. My mom just bought a property. It's very low lying. I can tell to get out to the street that she's likely gonna be deeper than five feet. And so that would be the cost for that. Now, this doesn't prevent the property owner, if they're friends with a Class A contractor, to go out and do the work. They don't have to pay this fee if they can get the work done themselves. It's just very difficult because our economies of scale are obviously a lot better. If we're doing forty or fifty of these every time we put out a bid, we're getting a better price than what the property owner typically would get.
Thank you. And, and just last question, you know, let's say someone, you know, they find out they have to, to do this repair, um, you know, due to the aging infrastructure there. You know, like what are the options for financing that or for, you know, let's say they don't have eight thousand dollars, twelve thousand dollars. What, what might they do in that situation?
So we, we do do loans, right? Yeah, so we still do very low interest loans. Um, typically, you know, we have no problem doing that. Um, typically it will come out of the, the home itself, the equity in the home. Um, but we do do loans to, um, have the work done, get that under the loan, and then, um, they can move forward with the sale of the property.
Councilmember Conteros Deloche.
Hi, thank you. Um, I had a couple of questions, so I just wanted to clarify the, what triggers this, or I guess, uh, would be a sale of a home or it would be home improvements above fifty thousand or fifty thousand and above?
I think fifty thousand is the threshold. Um, now, it doesn't mean that every single house needs to go through this. What's good about, and I'll go back to my mom's house, is that her house was built in nineteen ninety-four. It's likely got a fine lateral and it's not made of clay. So the only time you have to replace it is if it's defective. So that's why we require a camera video of the lateral. If it's either defective or if it's made from clay. If it's made from clay, it has to be replaced, and if it's defective, it has to be replaced. If neither of those things are happening, you do not need to replace your lateral.
And the clay, um, is mostly in these older homes and older neighborhoods, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then, um, I had another question. Is it all right if I ask a few? Okay. Um, so I, I'm guessing the, the third reason potential would be if it just fails. I, I was asking you earlier, how did we handle this prior to five years ago where this cost was passed on to the citizens themselves? And you said, well, it wasn't something that was addressed unless it failed.
Yes, so if we had obviously sewage coming out into the street, the problem that we're trying to avoid here is what's called INI, it's inflow and infiltration, and that's the reason why we had lawsuits against this and why it was put into our permit to address this issue is because when we have rains, it more than triples our capacity at the, at the treatment plant. It takes us from anywhere from eight to twelve million gallons a day to thirty million gallons a day. And we were forced to do a study to analyze why that's happening. The vast majority of that INI was coming from laterals. And so that's why it was put into our permit, to put this as a part of that. And then it got more exacerbated through our recent lawsuit as well. And we had to make some changes to the ordinance at that point as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I, let's see. Uh, you and I talked today about shared lines, and I didn't really understand that very well, but that's something that you guys are still trying to iron out, how that's gonna work.
Yes, the city attorney and our city engineer having discussions about that right now would fall under that non-standard. So what happens is you have somebody who builds a development of five houses. The sewer main maybe doesn't reach all those five houses, so instead of having to run a lateral all the way down there, what happens in some cases is all of them get connected and we call them enterties. And when that happens, it's against our code and you cannot do that. We have a couple that are in a situ, they're kind of in limbo right now. So right now, we're treating those as non-standard and we're trying to come back to council with a more reasonable way of addressing those.
I have one last question. Um, I was just curious, is this just, um, consistent across the board or do we have any kind of uh, waiver adjustment or plan for how we could manage, um, for example, obviously it's different if someone's remodeling their home and they're spending, you know, fifty plus thousand dollars and we have a reasonable presumption that they, um, could also, you know, work on this, um, that, you know, pitch in for this improvement. Um, but I also know that we have people who are, um, we had someone come before council last year who was selling their home to move someplace more affordable, um, and was using their equity to be able to afford to retire and to live and, you know, to be someplace that was, you know, more affordable for them. And, uh, and I, that was a different situation because we were, uh, we realized that we had a SNAFU in one of our loan programs that we needed to adjust. But I think that, that is a realistic scenario because we do have an aging population. And so I'm just wondering, do we have any way to kind of account for like, hey, this person is old and poor and is selling their home to leave and?
No, unfortunately, we can't take that into account. That's when we would offer a loan, a very low interest rate if that was a possibility. Um, but we can't take financial, um, interest or wherewithal into account for this. It's got to be based on the transfer of the property or the, the PIR trigger.
Is that because of state law or is that like, why, why, I know that that we can't just water bills?
As well as a lawsuit.
It's what?
It's our permit, our wastewater treatment permit.
Oh.
It's written into that, as well as the loss, and City Attorney Luna can speak more to that.
Yeah, the, the ordinance as written now was influenced very much by existing litigation. And so the ordinance specifically says that financial hardship can't be taken into account. Um, best interest of the city can now be taken into account per, and update to the ordinance, uh, last couple of meetings, but um, as written and, uh, you know, per negotiations, uh, that grew out of that lawsuit, financial hardship, uh, doesn't alleviate a responsibility to take care of the sewer lateral.
I, I think I have more questions, but I can wait.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. Uh, well, still on the topic of sewer laterals.
You get three.
Yeah. Uh, I'm, I'm curious what the, what the practice has been historically for the city. Has it been in the past that we've been responsible or has it always been the homeowner? What does it look like here in, in the city historically?
No, and I don't know the date, but no, there was a change where it was put on to the property owners. Arcata has a it somewhat reason, I think it was done when the ordinance came up, which was eight years ago. I don't know how long ago it was, was when that was changed. Um, I could tell you other surrounding communities are somewhat different. Uh, the county, it, it, it doesn't really make a difference in my opinion, and I'll tell you why. So Arcata does it. They take care of the lower lateral and they make the upper lateral the responsibility of the, um, property owner. When we're taking care of the lower laterals, that's just gonna be reflected in rates. So if we were to do that, it would be a rate schedule adjustment that would have to go into our annual fee. And what it would do, while it would spread the costs around through all of our ratepayers, it would wouldn't say somewhat penalize those who aren't needing that. So if they have new infrastructure, that person would be paying into that. So if we were to do what Arcata does and take over that responsibility, which by ordinance, we're not doing that. By ordinance now, it's all the property owner's responsibility, it would come in out as a part of our rate review.
And then granted, that was before your time, it was before my time, but has there been any consideration on what that cost might look like then if it were to be shared around? Did they look into that at the time that this ordinance was developed?
They did, and it wasn't before my time. It was about eight years ago. So, um, no, they did.
Before your time.
This was a decision, and I think it was more of, A, we didn't know the impact. I don't think we could put a price to that because we don't have the camera footage of every single lateral within the city. Um, and B, if I had to project and, and see what would happen, if we were to do that, there would likely be more lawsuits because we weren't addressing the issue in a timely manner that these lawsuits have brought up. And so that's why we chose to do it at a point-of-sale thing because every time that happens and every time there's a public improvement over a certain amount of money, then we force them to video their, their line and then we have an idea of where it's at.
And since I'm only allowed one other question as for the mayor, I'm, I'm curious about the, uh, the downtown employee parking, uh, permit. We had a pilot program in the works and so is this a result of that? And we determined that fifty dollars is fair. And then, of course, who pays that? Is it the employee or the employer?
So it will, it'll be up to them, but it's the employee, it's the, uh, we would assume the employer. because it can be moved from employee to employee. It's not going to be implemented right away. This is preemptive, similar to the Gulch and Greenway ordinance. Neither of these are actually in place. We're extending our pilot program right now because we haven't, um, thought of the best way to implement it. But we're really trying to get business owners and their employees to park in parking lots. And so we want to do a very nominal fee and we figure fifty thousand dollars, I mean, excuse me, fifty dollars a year per employee is a pretty screaming deal. And so that's the idea, so that we get people off of the streets, um, that are working there and employed by them into the parking lots. And so this is just a fee setting up for when we go away from the pilot program and, and get it more fully implemented. But we haven't done that, and part of the reason for that is because of the metering system in the parking lots. We haven't made a decision on that, but we wanted to get this in place in case, um, we do figure that out prior to, um, the regular fiscal year. Just so everybody knows, the pilot program still is in place and you're still okay.
Okay. Councilmember Castellano.
To Councilmember Fernandez's question about, you know, why don't we just pass the sewer lateral, fees to rate payers, there's also restrictions in terms of like what we can charge rate payers, um, like legal restrictions. Am I correct?
Well, there are restrictions, but it basically whatever it takes to operate and maintain the system, we can charge for that. So when we do those rate reviews, all of these costs are factored into that, um, both treatment and collection.
Councilmember Conteras Deloche?
Yeah, um, I guess a thought and a question. Um, yeah, I would think that that would be problematic anyway, too. I, 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 I think I would feel squeam, I, I would be completely uncomfortable actually not to squeamish with us, um, spreading that cost out, uh, where then you then have, uh, you know, poverty, um, impoverished rate payers subsidizing, um, homeowners like myself or something, um, who, you know, can afford it. I just, that, that would be unjust, I think. Um, but I, I do have a question going back, just one last thing. I, so we can't base it off of income. Um, and I am curious, though, can it be based off of like the sales of a home? I, like, for instance, over this next couple of years, if people are, again, with my scenarios of people who don't have a lot of money, if they're, you know, close to or upside down in mortgages and there isn't going to be much of a thing, are we able to then say there's, they, there's no money or is it still?
So I just want to be clear.
Anticipating poor people.
I apologize. Yeah, I just want to be clear, that's under our current ordinance. And, uh, I'm not saying that can't be looked at in the future. I'm just talking about how it looks now and the reason why we got to the ordinance in the way that it is now, was a, a long process and it can be reviewed. It's not going to be reviewed tonight, of course, because that's not the ordinance we're talking about. But, you know, if you want to have that discussion and, and do a, a deeper dive into whether or not there are ways to, to work around that, the answer is we haven't asked that question. So my answer to your earlier question was, again, to be clear, just based on the current state of the ordinance. And there were, you know, good, good reasons at the time that that ordinance was put in place to make it that way. Again, could we look at that in the future? Potentially. It'd be definitely another, another agenda item, though.
Thank you for the clarification. Hang on one second, but I do want to hear what you're going to say. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that. I was thinking that it was like, here is the law and it's a hard thing. And not that maybe we could try to evaluate if there's some way to consider, you know, a fractional, you know, group of people that might be in a situation that's incredibly difficult and that would be making it more difficult for them. Again, not speaking of people who are remodeling their home, but specifically, you know, people that might be in kind of a, a dire situation.
I just want to say that we can, these are enterprise funds and we couldn't just waive it. If we were to do that, we'd have to find a way of paying that money, um, through some other thing. So whether it's grant funding, general fund, whatever it may be, if we were to get to the point where we say, okay, this person is upside down, we don't want to charge them, whatever that fee is, that fee still exists and we still have to pay the enterprise fund that money. Where that comes from will have to be determined.
But it's something we could discuss.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the city has already tried to strike a balance there by offering loans to people so that they don't get themselves into a situation where they absolutely can't, you know, do the thing that's necessary for them to sell their home, et cetera. And I think the city manager is right, simply waiving because somebody is in a situation becomes very problematic. That's, you know, an analysis we haven't done for tonight's meeting. So I just, I don't want to get too far down that road, but I did want to clarify, it is in our current ordinance. It's very explicit in that current ordinance. So, you know, what we're talking about today recognizes the current state of our code. Uh, and, and we're, we're working from that code.
And, and these rates, the twelve thousand, six hundred and the eight thousand are subsidized through our rates at twenty percent right now.
No, I understand that. I'm just considering scenario, I have elderly neighbors and considering scenarios. Some of my neighbors have reverse mortgages. I don't know if you guys know what those are, but it's where basically they had enough and they're old enough that the bank is now taking that money every month so they can stay in their home with this presumption that they're going to pass away probably before they run out of equity. And in a situation like that, if it's a third scenario where their lateral fails, you know, an eight or twelve thousand dollar loan is, is an extreme hardship. And so I don't think in an aging community, it's that outside the pale that something like that could occur. So that, that's why I'm bringing up, thank you, I don't want to belabor the point, but thank you.
But just without it failing, I mean, if they stay in their home, none of this gets triggered. So if they're just staying there, this, you know, go, there was some misperceptions that anytime you did something on your house, you had to submit a, and there were certain contractors that were doing this, is they were sending it. This wasn't triggered at all and we were receiving video camera footage of it. It only gets triggered if you spend that amount on your house or if you're selling the house. That's the only time that you shouldn't need to worry about this, or if it fails, obviously.
Can I ask one last question? I'm sorry. Um, when somebody does a reverse mortgage, is that considered a sale because they have created a new?
No.
No? You're sure? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, going, going back to the notion then, thank you for my fourth question. Going back to the notion or the idea of, of, uh, a remodel or a renovation hitting that fifty thousand dollar mark then. Is it any particular type of renovation or remodel, only if it touches the water? Or it could be something as, I don't want to say simple, but it could be something as a roof, too, if that hits, hits that fifty thousand.
It doesn't have to be related to your waterways, sort of. We, we use that as a threshold for public improvements in the right of way as well. So, um, let's say you bought a property that was an old shed that didn't have a sidewalk in front of it and you tore that down and built up, uh, a bigger home that was over fifty thousand dollars. That would trigger P I, what we call PIRs, and some of that would be sidewalk gap fills, other things like that.
And, and I'm assuming this was part of the lawsuits that made its way into the ordinance as well then, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open this public hearing. Uh, let me just, go here for a moment. So now's the ti, oh, all matters listed under this category? Nope, this is different. So, uh, it's time for public comment. Is there anyone here to, who wants to comment on this item? You can line up on the side if you'd like. That would be great. Come on up. You have three minutes to share. Hello and welcome.
Hi, Kim. Thank you, Mayor Burgel. Uh, my name's Victoria Copeland. I'm a, a property owner in Eureka. I'm a longtime resident of Eureka. I own the Key Real Estate Group. I am a member of the Humboldt Association of Realtors. I am not speaking on their behalf. I'm speaking on my behalf as a resident and, um, a business owner in Eureka. So I'm asking you to vote no on these proposed, on the proposed increase of what the engineering department is proposing to the fee and lieu for the upper lateral certification. Due to many decades of not keeping their side of the street maintained, the city of Eureka is looking to generate income for repairs to its sewer mains and lower laterals by taking of homeowners' equity. And now they want even more money during a real estate transaction. There are many other ways that money for this maintenance could be generated. The city did not have to institute this ordinance. They chose this route. The ordinance hasn't changed to my knowledge since two thousand and twenty-three. Yet it appears that staff interprets the rules differently in similar non-standard situations. I have two specific properties that both had cross-connected upper laterals. One home seller was able to pay the in-lu fee of eight thousand dollars. Um, and that was following this March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, unusual lateral scenarios handout guidelines that, um, I have in my, on my computer stored. I don't know if this is no longer on your website. I don't even know if these are no longer, um, uh, being able to be used. Um, but there's, there's, in every situation, the eight thousand dollar in-lu fee is an option. The other home seller who had the same cross lateral since, situation, was told in writing by the engineering department, and I have this in writing in a screen capture, quote unquote, "This property does not have a lower lateral. It connects to the neighbor at," and I'm not going to say the address. "This property is not a candidate for the fee and lieu as there is no fronting main." "The homeowner will need to install their own main connection," quote, "lower lateral," unquote, "and repair the upper lateral before the home can exit escrow." And this was in the summer of two thousand and twenty-four, little over a year after the first scenario where they were able to pay and just defer until the city was going to come along and do all the mains in that street. So, talking about equitable, same situation treated very differently. I'd also like to see requirements put in place on the city's side of the OpenGov portal. They should have three business days to review the uploaded CCC TV footage. Anyway, it's, it's, uh, the OpenGov and the engineering department causing delays. And I was, I heard a story that a Realtor that was delayed actually pulled all of you guys into it in an email stream because she wasn't getting anywhere with the, uh, engineering department. So just, I did some research. HCSD was part of the lawsuit until they proved that they were maintaining their infrastructure. HCSD has no plans of.
Thank you, Victoria. You can send your notes an email if you'd like, or you can bring those, you can send those to. Is there anyone else here that'd like to comment on this item? No? Hi, welcome, Janelle.
Hi, I didn't expect to comment on this, but, um, my husband and I actually went through this. At a time when people were screaming about this, women from Fortu, from Fortuna coming and talking to the council. We owned a property in Eureka. There were some changes happening in the area with, that, and I, I just finally said, let's get rid of that property. The property manager that we had hired didn't do the garbage and just, it was just a pain in the rear end. So anyway, and that is when we decided that no, we couldn't sell it until we did a lateral. So it is something that comes up and it was an expense. It was unexpected. Staff was pretty nice about it. I mean, they, what could they do? They just could, you know, gave us, told us people who could do it for us and stuff. So, but it is a real issue. For us, it wasn't really a financial issue. If it had happened to my sister-in-law's house, it would have been for her a very substantial issue. That's all.
Thank you, Janelle. Welcome.
Jill McDonald, a local Realtor. I don't think any of us, we've all accepted the eight thousand fee and lieu, and I think the twelve thousand, five hundred, we can deal with that as well. And we've been managing this on your behalf and on local homeowners' behalf. The one thing that wasn't mentioned tonight, though, which we've, uh, recently run into our office has, is the, um, at the discretion of the engineer's expense, them coming up with this not defined number. And that's, I think, why the audience is full of Realtors tonight. Yeah, yeah, we don't want to do that to you. So for, we had a example, um, we had a house that we were in escrow with on Thirteenth Street. And actually, the owner's daughter is here tonight. The house sold for two hundred and forty-seven thousand, um, dollars. And it was a non-standard situation. And the bill that was quoted to us was thirty thousand dollars. And that's why we're outraged. There has to be a cap. It can't just be an open-ended number. We, and we can't, we can't have our sellers go into escrow and not know what they're committing to. And not being able to close because they don't know what the, the amount is. So that, that's the issue and that's what we'd like tightened up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Joanie Frederick and we have Azalea Realty in McKinleville, and we do a lot of business in Eureka. And I agree with Jill that we've gotten used to the eight thousand. And if they're a little more work because they're deeper, maybe the twelve six would be okay. It's the uncertainty with the engineer giving a bid and just giving an estimate and then summing. It's like a blank check for a seller or a buyer to have to deal with. They aren't going to really know what the lower lateral is going to be until you're doing the main. And then once you do the main, is that going to change or are you going to give a solid number that you stick with? The seller starts with the upper lateral to begin with. So it's from the house to the cleanout, which they want behind the sidewalk or in sidewalk. That can be six to ten thousand. So we're not even talking about the upper lateral. That one's going to be done. We're talking about the lower lateral, which isn't even on the owner's property. It's from the sidewalk or the back of the sidewalk to the main. I had one that ran across the street, the main, and that was three years ago and it was thirty grand. So, um, if we have an estimate from an engineer, is it a solid estimate? Is the buyer taking that on when you get to the main that you replace? And it might go up because the costs have gone up, um, it's kind of unclear of what's going on there. And it just seems like a blank check for both a seller or a buyer.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello. Good evening, council. My name is Tina Christensen. And I'm here representing myself, my sellers, my buyers. You know, three or four years ago, this real estate community came together with the city of Eureka. We never did want a point of sale, but we knew the city needed infrastructure help. The city is responsible for its lines. You did not, not you, but prior people did not take care of them. They did not spend the money to have them scoped. How come Humboldt Community Services District takes care of theirs? But I'm going to go on and read what I have. But this is something that we had an attorney take a look at because we couldn't understand where you got this in-service one, this, uh, one that the engineer is going to estimate. This came in under finance. How are we supposed to track what is going on with the sewer lateral if you put it in finance? You know, you change an ordinance and you put it in finance. That's not right. So anyway, the decision to place these changes under the finance section of the agenda, rather than clearly listing them under ordinances, prevents the public from fully understanding the impact of these policies. The lack of transparency leaves Eureka homeowners and buyers in the dark about costly new requirements that directly affect real estate transactions and major remodels. You need to do better as a city council in providing clear, adequate notice and ensuring these issues are easily understood by those they impact most. The financial burdens these changes create is staggering. We have seen sewer level estimates as high as thirty thousand dollars, as in this case here. Eighty-nine years old this guy is, and you're charging him thirty thousand dollars for a lower lateral that had to have a main ran. I thought the mains were the responsibility of the city. I thought we were responsible for the laterals. So I'm unsure on, you know, in talking to some of the contractors, they're unsure on how to do some of these things. You have lists of how these contractors are supposed to do these things, and then the city's asking them to do other things. Five feet back from new roads, you know? You know, that's an additional cost that was not provided or not told about. My time is up, but I just ask, I'm with Victoria. I think this should be postponed or say no to it until we all have a chance to vote on it and bring our questions to you on why these costs are so high. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Suzie Smith. I'm also a Realtor. I'm a member of the Humboldt Association of Realtors. I've had two transactions where the lower lateral had already, already been replaced in years past by the city and sidewalk cleanout was already in place. Those lucky home sellers got to keep their $8,000 in their pockets while neighbors a few blocks over, while neighbors a few blocks over didn't. Not very fair, in my opinion. After two years of collecting this loo, this fee in lieu, I would be curious to know how much has been collected and to verify that it has exclusively been spent on lower lateral collections. My conservative, conservative guess is that over 2 million has been collected from real estate transactions. I've yet to see a street redone. Now let me talk about why I believe the city started this point-of-sale requirement. They were sued by the Ecological Rights Foundation on March 8th, 2022. The city could not prove they were taking care of their infrastructure responsibly. The point-of-sale sewer lateral inspection requirement with the lieu fee money grab went into effect on January 6th, 2023. Again, I will state that no increase in the fee in lieu should be considered. I do understand that some lower laterals will be complicated, more complicated than others, and that the true cost of even the most simple lower lateral may exceed $8,000. But the city has the duty to budget their ratepayers dollars wisely and to make infrastructure maintenance a priority out of their current budgets without relying on taking homeowners' equities. I live in the city of Eureka. I have paid a sewer bill consistently since 1997. My most current sewer rate is 110.97 a month. A friend living in Cutton in the Humboldt Community Services District pays $80.61 a month. My understanding is that the Humboldt Community Service District has no plans to institute a point-of-sale mandate. They will continue to maintain their sewer mains and lower laterals out of ratepayer budgets and other sources. I ask you all, if H, if the Humboldt Community Services can maintain their side of the street, why can't Eureka? Thank you for your time. Continuing Victoria on Copeland's comments.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, welcome.
I'm Felicia Costa. I have a, I'm a homeowner in Eureka, and I own a business, Humboldt Premier Properties. I'm the broker-owner with my husband on that company. I, obviously, a lot of good reasons to put this off or vote no at this time. I did just want to add, well, first of all, I wanted to say I'm so glad that Jill said that we're managing this for you because we are, like, the city got sued for, for this, and now, now we are managing it for you. So we're, so, so, and we're happy to do it because we, we serve our clients and we, you know, we have to help make these negotiations happen between buyers and sellers, and we're very good at it. But it should be noted that we are managing it for you. There's just one other point that I wanted to make. I actually requested, and I hope you guys will too, some kind of document that shows what, shows the money that's gone into this account for the fees in lieu. You're collecting $8,000 every time a transaction closes and one of these sewer laterals needs, needs to be replaced, and they're doing the fee in lieu. I'd love to see how much money has been collected and how much money is being spent. It sounded like Miles had said that, that the city is contributing 20% over what you're collecting on it. So I, so if that is correct, then i- if, if you have, what's the, okay, 200 laterals a year at $8,000 each time is $1,600. So if you're contributing 20% over that, then you're paying, what, $1,960, something like that. I would just love to see those numbers. I want to see, because I'm quite sure that sometimes the city is paying more than $8,000 to replace a sewer lateral, but I'm also quite certain that the city is paying less than $8,000 on plenty of houses also. So I would just, I'd love to see that. I requested that information from the city. They're going to take 10 days to look at that request and see if they, if there's anything that can be provided to me or not. So I would like to see that provided to us so that we can see where that money is going and how it's being spent. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Sorry, guys. I really tried to leave you on a good note. That's not going to happen. So really quick, a few years ago, we had our upper lateral replaced. We actually got a letter posted to our door that said, "Hey, you have X amount of days to get this done. If it's not done by this, you impose a fee. If the fee doesn't get paid, we're going to at some point cut you off." So we could not afford to pay for it. So we did it ourselves. And then just hearing you guys say potentially someone threw out the question or what-if scenario, what if we start imposing so that everybody pays the fee so that it gets done? Please don't do that. I'm a small business owner that's barely surviving, and you guys all know what I own. And we're barely surviving. Eggs are what? $12, $13, $15 if you're lucky, $40 at Wincor right now. We're about to go pay, what, 10.25% of a hike in taxes in Eureka? If you guys put this money, if you guys potentially say like, hey, everybody across the board pays for it so that everything could get done, for those of us who have already done it, and then it's just, right now, it's not the time. So please consider what way you guys figure this out, but please don't add more money to those of us that are already struggling to make our ends meet.
Thanks, Jessica.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
I'm Matt Anton Giovanni. I'm a local mortgage lender, so I'm not a realtor. But I work with a lot of the people behind me and see that there's just not a whole lot of transparency in what's done with the money thus far that has been collected. And there's no consideration for people's equity in their home and the city's lack of maintenance of their lines. And, I mean, I've seen it to where the sewer lateral went through the alley and crossed over three other properties, and then that person since they are selling is punished for the sewer lateral that was put in place, you know, years before they were even a homeowner. So, right now, we're all kind of questioning where the money's going. You know, we've got sales tax, breaching 10%. We've got sewer laterals. Now we're increasing 150% from my math, from $8,000 to $12,600. And at some point, it's, you know, people either are selling their houses and not a whole lot of people have a ton of equity to put towards this, especially when there's, there are certain situations where it seems like $30,000 is insane. I, I, if I were to sell my house today and that happened, I wouldn't be able to sell my house. So, any consideration of that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience or in chambers that would? Come on up.
Hi there. Everybody here that has been speaking, they're business owners and they're real estate, and it's really important. I'm not. I'm a homeowner. It's very sweet of you to offer me a loan. However, I'm 71, and I'm a cancer survivor. So I get a loan for, say, $30,000 from the bank. Probably not going to pay it back. So who gets screwed? The bank does, but you don't. There's no transparency. We're paying a lot in taxes right now. So please, say no on this increase. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Okay. Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to come forward? If, okay. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Michaela. I'm reading this on behalf of the Humboldt Association of Realtors. Dear members of the Eureka City Council, on behalf of the Humboldt Association of Realtors, we are writing to express our concerns regarding the proposed schedule of fees and services charges fiscal year 2024 and 2025, particularly the increased fees and the requirement for buyers and sellers to close escrow based on estimates that they may change later. As currently outlined in the city of Eureka's schedule of fees and charges, irregular installs as determined by the city engineer may be charged at time and materials or require use of a private contractor. An applicant shall advance a sum to the city based upon an estimate by the city engineer of the total cost of all labor, materials, equipment, and other costs incidental to the installation. For the installation of the sewer lateral from the sewer main to the property line, the languages recreate significant uncertainty in real estate transactions. Without a clear and consistent understanding of costs, it becomes challenging to properly advise our clients, both buyers and sellers, on the financial obligations they may face. This also leaves ambiguity as to what constitutes an irregular lateral. Sorry, I wasn't planning on reading tonight, so.
You're doing great.
The cost of some sewer lateral estimates has been excessive, making it difficult for many homeowners to sell their properties. For example, a recent case in Eureka involved a homeowner in his 80s who was quoted $30,000 for a sewer lateral, sewer lateral replacement by the city engineer, an amount that was prohibitive given that the home represents his primary asset and retirement security. These costs, particularly when determined at the point-of-sale, create an undue burden in an already challenging housing market. While and, while we acknowledge the need for sewer lateral repairs within the city, we strongly urge the council to reconsider the method and financial impact of these requirements. The unpredictability of costs and the potential for significant financial strain of homeowners could have long-term negative effects on Eureka's real estate market and broader community stability. We respectfully request that the city council postpone the vote on the proposed changes to the schedule of fees and services in order to give us all more time to work together to create a better path forward for the current and future homeowners of the city of Eureka. We urge the council to reevaluate these provisions to ensure a more equitable and transparent process that does not disproportionately burden homebuyers and sellers. We welcome the opportunity to discuss potential solutions that balance infrastructure needs with the real, realities of our local housing economy. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thanks for bearing with me.
Thanks, Michaela. You guys are great out there. Thank you for not applauding. Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to speak? If not, we'll take it to Zoomed. Oh, we've got one more. Sorry. Welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Andy Parker with Azalea Realty. I just want to echo all those comments and ask you guys not to add these fees on. We're already having our clients have to pay $8,000. And Miles, you do have to take care of the lower lateral in Arcata. So, so, just a point of clarification. There's a bunch of people back here that can all speak, but maybe you guys can go to vote.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, we do have some more public comment on Zoom, I believe. Yes? So we'll be taking that now.
Samsung? It's just Samsung SM?
Yes, that, that's me. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Dreyer. I am a Realtor that's been selling houses with buyers and sellers since the last 35 years. And I really want to make a point that I don't blame any of you or any of the staff for any of this situation because 70% of the homes we're selling in Eureka were built like 75 years ago. So I'm pretty sure none of us were even born yet when a lot of this problem started. Now, a lot of the problem isn't just the fee because most of these homes are cross-connected. Now, Mr. Slattery, excuse me, Slattery stated that Arcata does not require the lower lateral. They do. Their in-lue fee is somewhere in the neighborhood of $6,000. We've been contributing to the city of Eureka to the tune of $8,000. But many of these aren't even, they're, they're just, there's no way. The problem is fundamental. It's not the amount of the fee. Many of these are just cross-connected across alleys, under additions, into side streets and alleys and even cornering streets where these laterals are going, and we're trying to sell these houses. And they're literally impossible to correct, and it's not the engineering department's problem. I mean, it is their problem, but it's not their fault. And it's not your fault, but it's just making it super difficult to, to navigate this. And it's, what are you going to go dig up a neighbor's yard? I just had one fall apart because there was no, literally no main in the street. And it went out through an alley, out the neighbor's cornering house and into the cornering street. So with no main, how are we supposed to sell this house? So, okay, there's the $8,000 in-lue fee. Now I did the math. $8,000 times the 300 homes that sold last year in Eureka, maybe 2 million, maybe 2.5. The other math I did was, there's 12,000 homes in Eureka with all these old, 75% of them are older than 75 years old. If you sell 300 of those 12,000 homes every year, this problem is going to take you-
Thank you, Kevin. I'm sorry, your three minutes are up, but we appreciate you being here.
Angela? Angela?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Tracy Heller Schumardt. I'm a real estate broker, and I own Forbes and Associates, Tracy Heller Schumardt. I've been in the business for 32 years, and I've sold hundreds of homes between Arcata, McKinleville, Blue Lake, Trinidad, Fortuna. We were okay with the $8,000 that came through the city three, three and a half years ago. We were able to advise our clients on this, get them to understand why they have to do this. But I think that there's a lot of unknowns here, and I'm asking that you vote no on this tonight and table it. Secondly, I'm shocked that Humboldt, and I'm not speaking on Humboldt Association of Realtors on their behalf. I'm speaking on my behalf as a homeowner, as a property owner in Eureka, as a business owner in Eureka, that Humboldt Association of Realtors or Realtors were not consulted in this prior to this coming to vote. I think that we should have come in and had talks with you guys. We sell 90% of the homes in Humboldt County. I would have thought that we would have been at least asked to be, to sit in and talk about this situation. I really am asking you to vote no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dakota?
I would just like to say that you shouldn't trust anything a Realtor has to say. They're a moneyed interest, and I have no faith that they have the best interests of the people of Eureka in mind. Free Palestine, that's all. I yield my time.
Thanks, Dakota.
I see no one else on Zoom.
Saying no one, we're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council for comments. And maybe clarifying questions? Councilmember Castellano?
I, I did have one clarifying question, maybe, maybe it's a two-parter, but it's just a little more information about the, the much-touted $30,000 sewer fee. And then also in terms of the, oh, sorry, I have so many tabs open. Okay. In terms of the, as determined by the city engineer, was there any exploration of like a, with a cap or anything like that?
No, so what's being referenced here is different than the Broadway situation that we talked about. We don't like to call them cross-connects because cross-connects are technically when water and sewer get together, we call them enterties. And so when that happens, what they're referencing is you have developments that go on years ago where either we don't have a main in a location or contractors trying to save money, whatever the case may be, they'll build five units. When they build those five units, as opposed to taking each one of those units and hooking it up to the main, they'll put them all together and have it go out, or one, or two, or three, however it may be. When they're talking about that $30,000 number, we don't expect people to extend the main. We're trying to find a way to get there because what happens is, like some of the public comments reference, you would have to get an easement from all of your- you would have to get an easement from all of your property owners between you and where the main is. And doing so is very prohibitive. It's not easy to do. So it's not a very easy solution to do that. Those estimates that are being provided to the Realtors for this are based off contractors' estimates that it would cost. So that would not fluctuate if that was to be happened. This doesn't prevent them from doing the work on their own. They do not have to go with what our engineer has estimated. That's the situation that I referenced before that we need to address because we're trying to work with the city attorney and the city engineer to make it so it's not so cost prohibitive. That has nothing to do with the twelve thousand, six hundred dollars and has nothing to do with the eight thousand dollars. And, you know, there was reference about this is an ordinance change. It's not an ordinance change. That city engineer directive that we talked about, about those non-standard conditions that came to council as an amendment to the ordinance, you guys adopted it and then you approved it two meetings ago, I believe. So that part of the ordinance has already been adjusted. Obviously, we don't make a dime off of this. This is an enterprise fund. It's a little frustrating to hear that somehow this is patting the coffers of the city of Eureka. It's not in any way, shape, or form. This is an enterprise fund. It has nothing to do with our general fund. We cannot subsidize this with tax dollars. It's solely from the costs associated with this and what we do as far as rates are concerned. But those situations do happen and we have a lot of pending right now. And the one that was referenced that came to you guys, we ended up putting a hold on that because it was so cost prohibitive. So we're not here to gouge people, but at the same time, we're not here to get sued by eco rights again. So we need to demonstrate that we're trying to get to that point. There will be something coming back to council to address these issues of cross, of inner ties that happen in the city because it's true. It doesn't, the frequency isn't as high as what you're hearing here, but it does definitely happen. And that's something we need to, sometimes that's not a big deal. Sometimes that main's right out in front of them. And what sucks about that situation is the person adjacent to you that they're tied to, they gotta deal with it at the same time because if the person next to you can fix it, that other person's gotta fix it. So these are the things that we need to figure out. And, but what's in front of you today is is something that was already adopted by council as far as an updated ordinance and that engineering decision as to what those non-standard things look like. But the twelve thousand, six hundred and the eight thousand is basically that averaging that we promised to do as a part of the estimate. And we noticed this dichotomy between lower laterals, excuse me, deeper laterals and more shallow laterals. And we were trying to make it more equitable for those situations.
Can I ask, can I ask, can I ask a clarifying? I'm gonna ask a clarifying question, yes.
Only three.
When you said, yeah, only three. So when you were talking about estimates and then you said that it really wasn't an estimate, or at least what I heard you say, would you be able to clarify that for me?
So.
And is it on an individual, each individual thing, or is it?
Those estimates only happen in the non-standard situations. What typically happens is we'll have a contractor, you know, on job for a utility project, so Mercer Fraser, Hooven, you know, G R Sundberg, whoever it may be. And when they're under contract, we say, oh, we got an issue over here. How about you look at it? This is our solution for it. What would it cost for you to do that? We do not extend mains internally. We don't do that. You know, we don't deal with those things. So we talk to a contractor. The contractor comes out and says, okay, you need to extend this main that far. You need to install a lateral. This is what I charge you. And that's where it comes from. That's not the city engineer providing that number. That's coming from a contractor with the engineer's direction as to what needs to be done.
I hear you, but what I was curious about was when we're saying it's an estimate, I thought I heard you say, and I may not have heard you correctly, but I thought I heard you say that it's not really an estimate. Like if somebody gives you an estimate of thirty thousand, you're not, is that a ceiling for that particular estimate or is there a potential for that to be even more?
If we were to move forward with that and there was a change, so the only thing that would change that is very similar to when we get a bid from a contractor. We give them the specs of that bid. And based on all of the knowledge that we know, this is what we're providing you and this is the design. So they give us a number. Now, if the contractor can demonstrate that you didn't include something in that design, therefore I deserve a change order, then that's the only time that it would go up. But if we were to set something with the property owner, we were to say thirty thousand, we would probably eat any sort of change orders that would come from that. But the design of that thing is based on any bid that we would do. We design it. We give it to a contractor and the contractor says, this is what it's gonna cost you now. Does that mean we're not gonna get a change order? No, I can't guarantee that. But we wouldn't tell a property owner it's gonna cost thirty grand and then when the work's done and they gave us a two thousand dollar change order that we'd charge them two thousand dollars more. But these typically aren't that complicated, so we don't expect to see as far as the fixes aren't that complicated. Fixing the problem is complicated, but the design for it, we would be confident in that happening. But this is an area that I brought up earlier that needs to be addressed because it really triggers other property owners that shouldn't be a problem. Now, is it good because we're getting our infrastructure fixed? Yes. But at the same time, this person's totally unknowing of whether or not to have it. And I hate to say it, there is a due diligence. I mean, since we've had this, I've bought multiple houses. I get my lateral checked every time, regardless of whether it's in city limits or not in city limits, because this is a part of due diligence. And it's no different when we're doing this project than when a homeowner, when a Realtor comes in and sells a house and there's certain thing, is this permitted? Is it not permitted? I need to disclose whether this is permitted. Does this have a carbon monoxide detector? Does it not have a carbon monoxide detector? It's part of that due diligence that we've just added to.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, and I appreciate the whole due diligence discussion, but my question, being a homeowner that has an inner tie, which I found out with a massive overflow of my sewer, who approved of the inner tie? Between me and my neighbor?
So it depends. I mean, at the building code at the time your house was built, I don't even know if they did inspections of that infrastructure. But it depends on when your house was built and what our building code was and those type of things.
Well, and I think that that brings up a lot of the discussion that we're hearing is like fifty years ago or whatever, you bought your house twenty years ago, that due diligence isn't to scope your line because we didn't even have this ordinance in place. So to me, it seems like, I hate to say this, but part of the responsibility is on the city as a whole for a hundred years or more of allowing sewer lines to go down alleys and go across the street. I'm just being, you know, brutally honest, something that we have to face is it's not, it's not really fair in like the case of the thirty thousand or a sixty thousand dollar one or whatever. There's crazy stuff going on in our sewer system that none of us are responsible for here, at least. You know, that, how do we say, well, now it's your responsibility, you should have, you should have known? Like, we can't do that in good faith. So I have a hard time saying, you know, I think what we have to do, like with the deep lines, the deep lowers, is, yeah, I think we're gonna all have to bite the bullet a little bit and say, we do need additional fees for that. But when it comes to these kind of crazy situations, there's gotta be a cap or there's.
Oh, we, I don't.
Hold on, hold on. I just want to make sure that we're, we're talking about what's agendized here, which is the fee in lieu. The crazy other situations that may happen that we're gonna address in the future, like that isn't, I don't want to get off track so that we don't know what we're voting on, which is a fee in lieu, which is set at twelve thousand, six hundred for these deep and non-standards. That's, that's how I interpret what we're doing tonight.
I interpreted it differently. I interpreted that, if there's a different situation, the engineer decides.
So if that's the case, I, I'm gonna recommend that we wait until the city engineer is here to answer that question.
I appreciate that, actually.
Yeah, if there's not consensus here at the staff level, my recommendation would be to put this over.
Well, I will, there are two different things. There's the fee for twelve thousand, six hundred and then there's a non-standard fee, which is basically establishing the city engineer's estimate. I will say that those situations where the attendant, you don't need to necessarily extend the main. It's the path of least resistance for most folks because if you're going across six different properties and getting easements for that property, you're gonna be a lot less than thirty thousand dollars in order to do that. You know, you're gonna have to deal with your neighbors and be worried about that. But that is one of the ways that it could be fixed, but that's, what's up here is the, the non-standard that's on there. And that was typically meant for what we were talking about for commercial properties. We've put these inner ties under that as well. And, you know, we plan on coming back to council with something that's for more specific to inner ties and looking at some sort of agreement for that. But, you know, we can't, we can't just say move forward without, without this having in place because then we'll get sued again.
Even the, sorry, one more thing, even the, the second bullet, if we were to drop that till a later date, I think we would be okay if we just discuss it next month or something? Okay.
We wouldn't wait till next month. We'd do it next.
Sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Well, it sounded like Scott wanted to make my, I mean, councilmember Bauer wanted to make my motion to postpone. So you want to do that, Bauer? Oh, yeah, no, I don't know how to make these and I don't like to, so. But, but hearing that, I do have a few questions before I would potentially do that. And so when we hear this thirty thousand dollar quote, and maybe it was answered, but it just didn't resonate with me, is that the full cost to the owner or seller and could it in fact be more? Is that a ceiling? Or is there a ceiling to this? And it doesn't sound like there is, correct?
That's what I was describing through both of those questions. It's based on any sort of bid that we put out for a regular project. So if we have a wastewater project, in this case, it was extending a main and adding an lateral to it. We do the design, we give it to a contractor, the contractor gives us a number. Now, if there's something within that design that wasn't accounted for and there's a possibility for a change order, yes, that could happen. But for a small project like this, relative to the size of projects that we have, we wouldn't expect it to be any more than that thirty thousand.
And so have we done enough of these to at least make some sort of average?
No, to say this happens a lot is not true. This, this does happen. The vast majority of the two hundred or so, and it's an approximate number of two hundred, are not like this.
And then in terms of making a motion that would approve at least the remaining balance of this, do I have to have two separate motions or could I just have one cohesive one?
You can do one and just remove the non-standard.
I think that would mean that we would have to renotice this public hearing if we just postpone the whole thing. And I'm, I'm looking to the city clerk now for some, some guidance on, on how to manage this moving forward. We could table until March fourth, the entire item without having to renotice. Is that correct?
Yes. So two things, if you wanted to remove that one item from the resolution tonight, you could. And then if you wanna just hold the public hearing next, at the next meeting to a time certain, we would not have to renotice.
And we're talking about the, the extended renoticing that happens here, not about the noticing that we do for all agendas. Obviously, that would still go out to the public, so the public would be able to come and, and speak at the next meeting.
This is the newspaper.
Exactly.
So it sounds like the simplest then would be to postpone until our next general meeting, regularly scheduled meeting of March fourth?
Yes, because then that ten-day noticing, already done.
I'm, I'm making that motion.
Second. So you have a motion in a second. And now councilmember Castellano had a comment or question?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I would have been fine with just doing the one thing, but that's fine. You know, I do think that, I agree with councilmember Contreras Deloche that I am not at all interested in passing this along to ratepayers. You know, I do think that the most equitable way we can address it is to, you know, at point of sale or, you know, when major renovations are taking place. You know, in, in twenty eighteen, the average median home price was three hundred and eleven thousand dollars, a hundred and thirteen, a hundred and thirteen. You know, it's increased significantly. So, you know, there are folks who are, for sure, you know, we want home sellers to make that equity. And it's also, there is an opportunity there to address some of this, you know. I mean, in some ways, many of those homeowners, you know, have benefited from the lack of investment over the years by not having to pay those fees. So that may be the, you know, the point at which we can, you know, at the very least, kind of start to address that. You know, to councilmember Bauer's point that it's not fair, you know, there's, sorry, to summarize, you know, there's a million things that we've inherited now, you know, in twenty twenty-five that aren't fair that would love to go back and have external talking to folks, you know, in like nineteen fifty and can't do that. So, you know, therefore, like we are at the point of, you know, we have to address a lot of inequity right now, right here. And so, you know, we're, and I commend staff for doing their best to try to make it as fair as possible, given the certain, the current situation and loss, you know, where we're dealing with lawsuits. We're dealing with people who, in our homes, who are ratepayers that can barely afford to pay the rates they pay now for water fees. And, you know, we don't want to increase those rates and cause that harm to people who are residents in our communities. So, you know, and I appreciate that we're all here asking many questions and, you know, folks who came out, you know, we, it's not like we want to make it harder to sell your house. You know, we, we do want that to be as easeful as possible and that's why we're trying to find a system that works. And why, you know, since I've been on council, I don't know, this has come before council almost more than anything, you know, because we're still wrestling with it. And we've gotten some really great insight from folks in the Realtor community. And so, you know, thank you for participating, for being here. And also, you know, I hope you recognize that we're really doing our best to make this like work for as many people as possible, as much as possible, knowing that there's probably no one system that's ideal, that's gonna like be the perfect system and, you know, as we inherit a system of disrepair.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments? If there are no further comments, please vote. Please vote. The motion to postpone? So to be clear, this is being postponed to a date certain of March fourth. Thank you, city clerk. Carried over to March fourth.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. All right, and it is eight twenty-seven. We are gonna take a short bio break. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to city council resolution twenty eleven dash two-two, if a member of the public would like an item or on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And I haven't heard any, oh, councilmember Fernandez?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I was gonna say, I haven't heard of anything being pulled. Great, we have a motion in a second. Please vote. Councilmember Bauer?
Five yes vote, five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to legislative action correspondence, do we have any? Not quite yet. Okay. A report and action items authorized emergency shelter opportunities and guidelines with city manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, and Mayor and council. It seemed to be very loud right now. I'm sorry. So this was requested by councilmember Fernandez and given approval by council to bring back what was called the two by two, but basically establishing two council members to work with the appropriate staff to discuss shelter space for folks and what the guidelines and what that process would look like. And so council, I mean, excuse me, staff is asking council to designate two council members to work with myself, the chief Stevens, as well as our chief building official Riley, and our development services director Kenyon on the process and what the guidelines are necessary in order to establish one of these shelter spaces.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for city manager Slattery? Seeing none, we will open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this item? Come on up, Janelle. Hi. Okay, thank you. Hello, hi. Thank you, councilmember Fernandez, to, for the request to have this on the agenda. And as I, as I remember, you asked for, to form a work group to determine the feasibility of a city sanctioned unhoused persons campsite. Is that what we're talking about in this? Did you don't need to answer, it's a. And what I want to say is that, um, I agree, I hope that you do this. I'm concerned that, um, the way it's presented on the agenda is that you're going to open a shelter. Basically, um, this, like the sleeping sites. And some of you don't know about the sleeping sites, as we're a few years back, where, um, locations were opened up and people could stay there during the night and left during the day. Um, I was there in the mornings, I interacted with the police, it was all very exciting. But, and there were problems and Miles Slattery helped with one of the problems. And that was that, um, we didn't know when the dump truck came to take the trash away. And he helped, told us when that, when we did it. There was also, and, and a rumor that it was the violence at the, associated with these and the lawlessness associated with the campsites that was the reason it was closed. Um, I can tell you that's not true. I did a public records act, there was no record of it. I was in contact with the chief of police during the time that, or was it the captain? I don't remember. During the time that it was happening. It was a tragedy that they closed it. But I wouldn't want to redo that because I think you need campgrounds that are operated in housing first, where people live under this, basically with some modification, the same rules as everybody who isn't lucky enough to own a home lives, and that's tendency. And I, that's my pitch. And I hope that you set up this committee and that I hope that you are open to discussing that. Thank you. Thanks, Janelle. Hello again. Hi again, people. Um, thank you very much, Mary or councilman Fernandez or whatever. I'm sure you already know what I'm going to say, and it is that people really need a campsite. And it may have failed before, I don't know exactly. Well, yes, I do know exactly why, because some people decided that they wanted it to fail. But if we all make a concerted effort, and I mean a concerted effort by allowing garbage removal and things like that, that they know about, it can happen, and I really hope it does. Because like someone else said earlier, we are actually fomenting criminalization when people don't have a place to stay. Personally, I'm a criminal. When I was a lot younger, a lot younger, I was a single mom and my, my parents were dead and I had enough money for housing and to feed my son and not me. I stole, I did. And I'm sure that, that poor people do it all the time right now, especially in this political atmosphere. Please try to make campsites work for them. They need a place to stay and shelters aren't doing it. Anyway, thank you all. Thank you, Pat. Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom?
I seen, oh, uh, E.
Welcome, E.
Hey there, um, I need to learn a little bit more about this, but I just wanted to say right off the top that I hope that there are plenty of unhoused community members who are helping, um, you know, decide what this looks like and where it's located and how it's set up. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Do you see anyone else?
I see no one else on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Fernandez.
I, uh, just wanted to address what was said earlier by, uh, one of the commenters was that, uh, yes, the intent of this is to have something a bit more cohesive, uh, not just between council members and staff, but to try and build that workability between us and the other municipalities, the other forms of government in the area. Because I think it was brought up by councilmember Bauer at the special meeting almost three weeks ago, that it's just like, we're doing a lot of the lift here. Uh, even, even on behalf of the county for the city of Eureka, we're taking a heavy, heavy, uh, lift with, uh, the unhoused population. And so it is, you know, engendering as it was put in that stability. So whether it's a campground or a shelter, we need to work out how we're going to be working with the other forms of government here in Humboldt to make sure that there's that stability for our unhoused folks.
Any further comments? Councilmember Castellano?
Well, I, I think in, just in terms of, you know, the, the matter on the agenda is designated to councilmembers to, uh, to meet monthly, to address this. And so I'd be curious just to hear from, uh, other councilmembers who might be interested in, in being on this, on this, in this group.
Councilmember Fernandez and then Contreras Deloche.
Yeah, I would absolutely like to be on this committee.
Okay, great. Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
I'm going to assertively put my name out there, but I want to give you my three reasons. Um, one is that I've spent a lot of time volunteering with what we're currently doing at Betty Chen's. Um, I've, and I've, I've spent a lot of time with Betty too, and just, I'm starting to spend a lot of time with that population. I feel like I've got, starting to get roots in deep there. I'm starting to recognize people and know what's going on. And the other is that, um, so much of the people, um, that are houseless are living though in my ward. So they are still my neighbors, you know, but they just don't have shelters. And, uh, I had a third reason, I don't recall what it was, but I think those are my, those are my primary reasons. And I, I, um, oh, and I think probably a lot of options tend to impact where my ward is at too. So that's, those are kind of my thoughts on it.
Councilmember Moulton.
Uh, maybe I, maybe I shouldn't comment this, but I just wanted to say that I wish that the half of this chamber that was full of people that wanted to talk about what we are not, are not doing for the unhoused community members that we are serving, were here right now to see this or any of the other things that we're doing. Because clearly, we care about this. Clearly, we are deeply embedded and clearly we value these people and we want to see them taken care of. Thank you, uh, councilmembers Contreras Deloche and Fernandez for volunteering, um, to put your efforts into this above and beyond everything you're already both doing for our community.
Councilmember Castellano.
Yeah, um, I have something to say, but I'll make a motion first. I move, uh, councilmember Contreras Deloche and councilmember Fernandez to serve on the, to meet monthly with staff to discuss authorized emergency shelter opportunities and guidelines, including, uh, campsites and other alternatives.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
And, and just to say, um, you know, thank, thank you to both of you for stepping up and stepping forward. You know, I, I, I think we all care deeply, you know, to reiterate councilmember Moulton's, uh, statement that, you know, about this and, you know, I, I think folks know, I, I did some work on this issue in the past. And so I'll try to find in, in, uh, with, uh, city manager Slattery. And so I, I feel comfortable that you can convey, um, you know, the learning opportunities that have happened to our new councilmembers and, uh, look forward to hearing what y'all come up with.
Thank you. There are no further comments, please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. So this brings us to the Eureka Police Department Annual Report with Chief Stevens.
I'll need it, but I don't have it. I, I will need it, but I don't.
Welcome, Chief Stevens.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Do my best. Okay. Uh, tonight I'm before you to bring forward, uh, three different reports, uh, two required by ordinance and/or law policy and one just being the annual report for the status of the Eureka Police Department in twenty twenty four. I'm going to start off with the military equipment. Policy. Uh, just a little background, and twenty twenty one, Governor Newsom signed, uh, California Assembly Bill four eighty one, which required law enforcement agencies to obtain approval from their governing bodies, city council in this case, prior to purchasing, raising funds for acquiring military equipment, collaborating with other law enforcement agencies and deployment of that equipment in our jurisdiction. The ordinance required as a part of the bill, as well as a policy, uh, crafted by the department, was implemented in early twenty twenty four. So this report is required under that ordinance and policy. And just to be clear, um, I know back in the day, we owned some equipment that actually was surplus from the military. None of this equipment we're going to talk about tonight is surplus military. The EPD does not have any military surplus equipment whatsoever anymore. So that's not a part of our inventory. So when the ordinance was passed, there was three different pieces of equipment and then just some information about our ongoing participation in the Humboldt County SWAT team and the, uh, CNT team. So I'll cover that at the end. But as far as the equipment that was approved by the policy in the ordinance, uh, is our five point five six semi-automatic rifles and ammunition. Currently, we have thirty eight of those rifles in our inventory. Their lifespan is approximately fifteen years. You can see on there the reasons they would be deployed, this is all in the policy. And it was approved by council. Uh, we deployed rifles this year on numerous occasions, depending on the types of calls or service we were at. However, there were no rifles actually discharged during the course of the year. The cost to conduct the annual training for this is roughly thirteen hundred dollars for our range fees. Ammunition costs range around fifteen hundred dollars. That depends on each year and the availability for training and our hiring needs to get new officers trained. Uh, purchasing needs for twenty twenty five, uh, we're looking to purchase five new patrol rifles. Uh, we are expanding our, our, uh, officers we're hiring. So the more officers we hire, we have to have equipment for them. So that is what the purchase is for. And we're looking to purchase five thousand rounds of ammunition. Uh, the ammunition purchases, it's an annual purchase of ammunition. We try to keep enough ammunition on site to conduct training, as well if there are, um, supply chain issues, much like during COVID. We don't run out of stuff that we can't then get for several years and it creates an issue with us trying to meet our mandates for our annual training. I will note though, that these rifles are standard issued equipment in our department and in law enforcement. So therefore, they're actually exempt under the military equipment policy per the government code. However, we have included them just for purposes of transparency with our community and council. The second piece of equipment we have on the military equipment ordinance is pepperball launchers. Uh, this is a munition or a, a launcher that is able to fire munitions that carry, uh, either OC or some type of chemical agent, as well as there are just impact rounds that can be used for a multitude of different circumstances. We have seven launchers in our inventory, their approximate lifespan is five years. Uh, we fired, or there were no rounds deployed in twenty twenty four. However, the equipment was deployed on numerous occasions, depending on the circumstances you see as the authorized uses. The cost to conduct the training is truly minimal, it's under five hundred dollars. Uh, the munitions are the only cost truly for the training because the training is conducted in coordination and conjunction with other weapon systems that we have. So we're not paying additional costs for personnel to conduct the training. And twenty twenty four, we purchased fifteen hundred and sixty seven dollars worth of munitions. We also upgraded some of the equipment, um, as you can see on the list here. The next piece of equipment in our inventory is less lethal shotguns. These are beanbag munitions only. And because we are using them for a less than lethal measure as a beanbag, um, weapon, that's the only reason we have to report them out because the shotguns themselves are not reportable. But we do have fourteen in the EPD inventory, their approximate lifespan is fifteen years. We fired no rounds in twenty twenty four from one of these, uh, weapon systems. The purposes and authorized uses are, as you see on the slide. The approximate cost to conduct the training in twenty twenty four was zero. Uh, training was conducted in conjunction with other weapon platforms and we already had all the ammunition we needed for our annual qualification. And, uh, the munitions we purchased was four hundred and ninety dollars in. Let me correct that. We spent four hundred and ninety dollars in munitions, um, in twenty twenty four. And that's just two rounds per officer as part of their annual qualification course. And twenty twenty five, we've converted, uh, three new shotguns, or shotguns we had in our current inventory to less lethal shotguns to conduct, cover our additional fleet and positions expansions. These are help, uh, were assigned to the CSAT ranger and the old town officer, and we created one, uh, for a spare. So as I said, Humboldt County Regional SWAT team, um, has members of every agency almost within the county take part in that. We do take part in that. We have two operators and a tactical dispatcher on that team. They operate under an MOU between the sheriff's department and EPD. The equipment used by the SWAT team is covered under the ESOS military ordinance policy. During twenty twenty four, we requested assistance from their team and special equipment operators for accident circumstances, uh, three total incidents. One incident was the actual SWAT team deployment and two others were the use of their drone team to assist with calls for service. All these were reported to the city manager and the council within the required thirty days under the ordinance. And that will conclude the military equipment report. If anybody has any questions, be happy to take them.
Do we have any questions for the chief on this item? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Um, the, in terms of just the cost of ammunitions, uh, between twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, from fifteen hundred to estimate, or, uh, approximate, to twenty eight hundred, um, is the, is that because just the cost of ammunitions has increased or is that, that we're getting more, planning to get more?
It's a combination of both. It's the cost of ammunition has gone up, but the, the amount we're purchasing in twenty twenty five is going to be more than we purchased in twenty twenty four, just to restock our inventory.
Great, thank you. And then I just, you know, as, as someone who attended a, you know, uh, peaceful, but, you know, a solidarity, solidarity gathering yesterday, you know, I mean, I think there's a lot of folks who are, you know, kind of concerned about, um, you know, whatever your political beliefs. But I, I, I guess I was just curious about how riotous behavior is defined.
It's a very strict set of guidelines that we could deploy those type of munitions in. Uh, the one time that I have seen it deployed in an environment like that was in twenty twenty, I believe it was, when officers were actively being assaulted as we were trying to make an arrest. They were used to create space and to back off those that were causing the assault to allow us to get back to our vehicles. Um, but that, it's truly has to be something above and beyond a peaceful demonstration. There has to be acts of felony, either vandalism, violence toward the officers or to others that needs to be stopped immediately to save lives or to stop injuries.
And, and, um, are you, is there a police definition or are you the one who makes the call in that situation?
It would be me or one of the commanders would make the call as the incident commander, based on the circumstances we're facing at the time of the deployment.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Yeah, that just brings up an interesting question and, um, I know we can't get in depth into it tonight then, but is there a crowd control policy in place or again, is that something that's decided by you and someone in the field?
Uh, crowd control policy is pretty much dictated in our, uh, operations plans. So they're not really, they're not public documents, the pieces aren't public documents, but it does spell out each type of activity that could be taking place from an absolute peaceful demonstration, a peaceful event to misdemeanor type crimes where somebody is spray painting things, uh, there's minor yelling going on to physical fights that break out to extreme felony vandalism or damage of property to then lives being threatened. So there are scenarios throughout our operations plans and for each one of those, it allows for a different level of response based on that and then on the incident commander's decision.
Okay. Uh, and then going back to the, uh, regional, uh, SWAT, you had mentioned that there is an MOU with HCSO. And I'm curious if we can have a copy of that, if council can have a copy of that shared with them.
I can send it to the city attorney or the city manager's office and get that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, boy, it is probably under, I don't know if it's on our line, but probably the sheriff's department. We'll make sure we point you in the right direction for us, sir.
Yeah, it's a public document and we believe it's already on the website, but if it isn't, we'll make sure it's there. Yeah.
Councilmember Bauer.
I think it's good news to hear that we, we didn't have to discharge any firearms, like the long rifle and the beanbag guns. Over the past ten years, how many times have we had to, you know, discharge one of those weapons? What was you, just roughly?
Yeah, I mean, there have been a couple of officer involved shootings that the rifles have been used in. I can think of one particular case with, uh, individual that was charging down a trail toward officers, uh, who were in pursuit of him. There was other officers staged on the trail, at which point he was holding a knife. They discharged a less than lethal shotgun, beanbag rounds stopped his assault or stopped his. There was other officers staged on the trail, at which point he was holding a knife. They discharged a less than lethal shotgun, beanbag rounds stopped his assault or stopped his path. It's kept him from having to shoot him. Uh, the pepperball launchers have been used um, at least once in that crowd control environment that we were in when we were getting assaulted. And then other times to, you know, when you put and introduce an OC device into a circumstance to evacuate people who do not want to be evacuated, such as you have a felony suspect hiding in an attic. And instead of me sending officers up into this attic where they can't see, we can deploy the, the munitions up there, create a circumstance where the becomes very uncomfortable for somebody to be up there and try to convince them then to comply with our orders and peacefully surrender. So that has happened probably two or three times that I'm aware of.
I, I just bring that up really, I kind of know the answer. I mean, we don't, people like to talk about the high crime rates, but I think you just made it pretty clear. We don't really have that bad of a situation.
No, and the tools, the less than lethal beanbag rounds, the pepperball launchers definitely give us options that are less than that lethal. So we can work on our de-escalation, work on, you know, the level of force that we have to use to address the circumstances that we're facing and hopefully not get to that point to where we have to use lethal force. That's kind of the opportunity we have with these weapon systems and that's why they deploy them in their cars every day and on a lot of calls because we want them available. Because we will get sued if we have these things available and we're at a call where we should have deployed them and at least had them available to use. And we didn't have them and we had to use a higher level of force, then we're setting a circumstance where we not following the law and not having all our de-escalation pieces in place.
Thank you for that.
I will just add real quick that the cost for the additional rifles and ammunition is already budgeted in our budget. We're not asking for any additional monies. That's in our range budget that we already have that we get every year through the budget process.
Thank you. So you have one, or you have a next item?
Three altogether, so hang tight. I'll go fast as I can. Uh, the next one will be the security camera report. And from our standpoint, this has to do with the lock hops in our contract with Live View Technologies. Again, there's a security camera ordinance with the city that we're required to report on, on annually on the use of these cameras. So this is one of our cameras currently that we have at, please correct me, Dyes, Dyes Park. Uh, so the, and I'll explain that in a minute, but that was just a cool picture I thought would be nice to add to how they're actually being used. So a little bit of history on this, and I apologize for the slideshow and the PowerPoint being so wordy. You understand these are public documents that we're going to put out into the public, so they had to be, explain a lot of the background that I know you already know, so I'll try to summarize a lot of it. Uh, several years ago, EPD contracted with Live View Technologies for a mobile surveillance camera trailer system, a lock hop. And 2022, the city contracted with LVT to have stationary cameras placed near high-traffic areas and high-asset city property. In 2024, the city modified that contract uh, to get rid of all but one stationary camera and we added three additional surveillance trailers to our fleet. Uh, EPD is primarily the responsible agency for the placement and setup of these trailers. Our digital evidence technician, Manny Ramirez, is the primary point of contact for the, for the company and the liaison between the department, city and the company. Uh, there are two people that are allowed or have access to the cameras and that is uh, EPD Ramirez and myself. Uh, the cameras are not monitored continuously by EPD. So if we need something from one of the cameras, then we have a timeframe that we call the company. The company pulls the video off of their, off the card in the camera, whatever it is, sends it back to us. We can get it. Uh, one camera does have the capabilities to set up a parameter or perimeter around uh, a location that if that perimeter is violated, then we can get a notification that there's something wrong. Uh, the one at Dyes Park is kind of set up that way. So if that thermal perimeter is violated, they start to give warnings that you're trespassing, cops are going to be called, those kind of things. It can go all the way up to where we have somebody from the company actually monitoring the alerts that come in, not the cameras, but there's an alert. They would monitor that alert, make a decision whether the cops had to be called or it's something they would talk through. The individual that's trespassing through the camera and try to gain compliance prior to having us called, but we haven't gone that far with, or had the need to go that far. Uh, the trailers are used to address problematic areas around the city. They've been used on city property as well as to request the business owners to address problems they're having at or near their businesses. Historically, locations identified uh, were by complaint or city staff through the SEPTED process when we would go out and visit businesses and address their issues that they were having. Uh, cameras are used in a proactive policing model when the city hosts large public events such as concerts and festivals, such as the Fourth of July. You would have seen it down there at Second and D. The trailers are a deterrent to criminal behavior and quality of life issues. When we place a trailer at a problematic location to address specific behavior, we see an immediate change and positive outcomes. In September twenty-four, of 2024, numerous reported and unreported damage to new and remodel city facilities, um, Carson Park to be exact, two documented felony vandalisms, wrote in thousands of dollars of damage. A lock hop was placed there near the end of September and since then, there's been no damage to the city facility. Right here at City Hall, city, the vehicles, uh, city vehicles that were parked near City Hall were suffering drilled fuel tanks. A total of ten city vehicles were damaged, each cost uh, to repair roughly a thousand dollars plus a hundred dollars in loss in fuel. And then as well as the damage to the parking lot and the surface of the parking lot, given the fuel hitting the new surface blacktop and then the environmental damage that come from that. That was up to right before Christmas, where we placed a lock hop there right before Christmas of 2024. And to date, we've had no other vandalisms reported in that parking lot to any city vehicles. A lot of these locations, we put these cameras, it's hard to actually put a number on or the deterrent or the change in the behavior because a lot of these locations didn't report criminal behavior to start with. Uh, one location just comes to mind is outside the shanty parking lot right there at Second and D. It used to be a place people would congregate. We would just get those complaints. Can we move them along? Can we address the quality of life issues? Can we address the drug use? Uh, we put a camera there and going back and then talking to the owners of the shanty and the employees, they felt much safer coming to going because the individuals no longer lording in that parking lot. There were no more vehicle birds in that parking lot. And it truly changed the behavior in that area. So cameras, they do deter crime. Uh, so our 2024 location is just an example is Dyes Park, uh, to address that theft of building materials and trespassing during the construction. Carson Park, we talked about Ginger Restaurant, uh, the parking lot at Second and C. Uh, that was to address quality of life issues around the end at Second and C. Second and A to address quality of life issues and criminal behavior. Pacific Plaza. The City Hall parking lot, we talked about Shark Park to address the camping suspicious and criminal behavior. Uh, we talked about the shanty parking lot, the city park on the east side of the shanty, and then the Fourth of July Festival. So that is the report on our use of the security cameras for the lock hops. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Stevens? Councilmember Castellano?
You know, I've seen quite a few successes. Is there any consideration of getting more? You know, I know sometimes they're limited in terms of how we can deploy them, um, you know, to areas that like where business owners are requesting or things like that. Yeah, are, are you considering getting, you know, looking at getting more in the upcoming budget year or?
We have no plans from a department or city standpoint to purchase more. We do the best we can to at least keep a couple of them that we can rotate through the complaint issues or complaints that come in, so we can address those concerns for business owners and others. A couple of them are kind of stationary right now just because of the ongoing construction. We want to make sure things get done at the park. Um, but the, your EPD doesn't have any intentions of buying or helping lease anymore at the current time.
We are seeing a lot of um, private property owners purchasing them. I know of about five or six that have purchased them since we've had them.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I, I know you said that it'd be difficult to put numbers on the, the crime that it's deterred, but are, are you able to say how many times that you and the other EPD officer have accessed uh, the videos or had to make calls in the last year?
Yeah, it would be three or four. I mean, honestly, it's not a lot. Um, and that's generally coming from a crime that occurred in the general location of a camera and then wanting to know if we can find any videos to help support the investigation and trying to solve that crime. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Concheras Deloche?
I have, I apologize if this was already mentioned and I just forgot. Did you, what, did you say how much the lock hops? How much those cost for each of those? The, that's what the trailers are, right? That move around?
Yeah. Give me just a minute, I may have.
I, I don't know if it was covered or not.
Monitoring and everything, I think it's around sixty?
It's about eight, seventy, eight thousand a month.
Not a month. It better not be Lane May have a heart attack, if that's the case.
Yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact numbers.
No, it's okay. I, I thought maybe I had missed it. I just, I was curious. They just seem like they're helpful and beneficial, so I was curious. Thank you.
Director Millar, do you want to give us the answer? Eight thousand a month. Great. For the whole system?
That's for all of them?
All five.
All five of them?
Four trailers in the stationary pole camera at the high tank facility.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further on this item? Carry on.
All right. Well, this is the one I was most excited about, so. As the chief of police, I'm honored to present our department's annual report tonight, highlighting the past year's achievements, challenges and the unwavering dedication of our officers, dispatchers and professional staff to the safety and well-being of our community. This year has been one of progress, resilience, commitment to service. We have made significant strides in recruitment, filling vacancies and increasing staffing to levels we haven't seen in years. While our patrol division and dispatcher remain short by three officers and three dispatchers respectively, the rest of the department is fully staffed and we are seeing a rising number of applicants across all positions. Our personnel continue to serve tirelessly in every aspect of our profession. Uh, one example of this is the dedication that occurred the other night when two patrol officers conducted a welfare check on an elderly woman who had not seen her in-home healthcare worker since before Christmas. Noticing she had no groceries, the officers purchased food, prepared a meal for her and ensured she had a way to reach them if she needed further assistance before the additional resources in our county could get to her. So this year, we've also strengthened our partnerships with community stakeholders, businesses and government agencies. Through increased presence at community events, training sessions for businesses and emergency services, and active participation on boards and initiatives that directly impact our agency, we have deepened our engagement with the community. However, challenges remain. Like many agencies, we continue to navigate the complexities of public safety in a rapidly changing world, addressing issues such as retail theft, mental health crisis and the need for proactive solutions that balance enforcement with compassion. Despite these challenges, our commitment remains steadfast to serve with integrity, empathy and excellence. Looking ahead, we remain dedicated to fostering a safer, stronger and more connected community. We will continue collaborating with residents, businesses and stakeholders to ensure that Urica remains a city where everyone feels safe and supported. In the coming year, we will expand our services, which we already have, to the Old Town by filling our Old Town officer position. And we've hired a second Parks and Waterfront Ranger to provide seven-day a week coverage for our parks and trails. I want to take this opportunity to thank the men and women of Urica Police Department for their dedication, professionalism and pres- preservation and overcoming every challenge. I'm proud to be your chief. To our community, we thank you for your trust, partnership, remain committed to transparency, communication and engagement with you. It's an honor to serve as your chief of police and together we will continue building a safer and brighter future. I know this was in the media too, but we've already identified the four people from the zoo that caused all the damage and that was done in an hour today, so that was kind of pretty cool. Thank you for our community for helping us with that. Uh, so yeah, just, just so I could talk about it. So this is our mission statement we included in our annual report. You can go on. That's the department photo. This is our org chart for 2024. This is how the department is broken down with each of the command staff's responsibilities and the different sections of the department that they oversee. The following slides, that's just the chief message I just read to you. We look at our total area of responsibility for the Urica Police Department. The next slide breaks down the city into the four beats. So we have three primary beats for patrol officers in the Old Town areas, the beat that's assigned to the Old Town officer position. So our patrol commander for 2024 was Wayne Rebeng. He's been with the department since 2008. Some of his responsibilities last year included our field training coordinator supervisor. He was a K-9 coordinator, a liaison with the CR Police Academy. He coordinates our fleet. He's a SWAT coordinator, peer support, ABC, OTS grant coordinator. Works on our um, mobile computers and he's also our stop data manager. So our patrol division is truly the heartbeat of our department. Uh, we've been under emergency staffing for several years. They've been working twelve and a half hour watches, either four days a week, three days a week, alternating back and forth. We staff our patrol watches with a sergeant and a minimum of four officers. We try to staff them all with five. Each officer handles about twenty calls of service per day. On top of the emergency schedule they were working, they usually had to work even more than that due to vacancies that we had. Mandated and optional trainings for their career development and to attend court and also to try to meet the needs of our grants or ABC and OTS grants. But we're truly grateful for the great dedication and work ethic that they have. So this is our crime reporting, the national crime reporting, NIBRIS. Um, I think, I may have explained this a little bit last time. Um, so in 2022, late 2022, we went live with NIBRIS. And 2023 was our first year that we actually did the new reporting. It's a more in-depth reporting system to the FBI. It now includes more than fifty-two offenses versus the ten that was originally reported under the Uniform Crime Reporting. On top of that, uh, this is something that can be done automatically through our CAD or computer aided dispatching system and our records management system. So it's no longer a report that we have to generate and submit. It's automatically submitted through our system. So 2023 and 2024, the two years that we can actually compare apples to apples in this. There are three major categories that all these offenses are broken out into, crimes against persons, which we had a 1.83% increase. Crimes against property, which we've seen eleven and a half percent decrease, and then crimes against society, which we've seen a 6.67% decrease. Our crime stats for 2024, patrol handled a total of fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-six incidents. Those are calls for service. Of that fifty-seven thousand, they self-initiated fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine. This is some type of activity, that traffic stop, pedestrian stop, patrol checks. We took five thousand three hundred and thirty-two written reports or cases. We conducted twenty-four hundred and ninety-seven traffic stops, took three hundred and fifteen traffic collision reports. On the right-hand side is just a breakdown of arrests. We made eight hundred and thirty-eight felony arrests out of the twenty-five hundred and thirty-six total arrests we made in 2024. Our field training officers are a very vital piece of our department. They're responsible for training all our new employees, whether they're a lateral officer, a police recruit coming directly out of the police academy, our community service officers and/or animal control officers. This is just a shout out to them and our new area that we built for them this year. When I talk about that later, that's our new FTO office where they can train and look over their recruits as they're training. But we just want to thank those FTOs, former and past, from 2024 that are listed at the bottom for all their hard work and making our department better. Our community service officers and animal control officers handled a total of thirty-nine hundred and eighty-nine incidents in 2024. They pulled seven hundred and ninety-nine case numbers. Uh, we handled a total of fifteen hundred and sixty-one animal calls. We took two hundred and eighty-nine animals at a minimum that I know of for sure to the shelter. We had ninety dog bites, uh, two hundred and eighty-nine loose dogs, and we ended up dealing with twenty-one different goats throughout the year. So it's not just cats and dogs that we deal with. There's quite a little selection of animals that we often see.
But goats are as exotic, as exotic as it gets?
Oh, no, no, sir.
Okay.
Uh, we are fortunate enough to have a great K-9 team. Uh, we have four K-9 teams within the department. They assisted on a hundred and thirty-nine calls last year. And thirty-two of those turned into actual cases. We have one dog that's trained in narcotics, firearms and ammo detection. Then we have three that are trained for narcotics, trailing and protection. So they're more in patrol-related operations. Commander LaFrance was our investigations commander for 2024. He's been vital since 2018 in the creation and furtherance of CSAT and then the care team. He teaches crisis intervention training, de-escalation training, as well as uh, training to help law enforcement deal with those suffering from autism, behavioral health issues. And he also puts on classes for our community when it comes to de-escalation, along with Jacob, to assist our community members, our businesses and learning how they can best deal with issues that come in that they see and what's the best response to that and when to call law enforcement, those kind of things. He's been vital in creating the crisis intervention training. He teaches at that as well as putting on classes for local law enforcement agencies to help with the fifty-one fifty evaluations, writing the reports to ensure that we're doing the best we can for this system as a whole. Our community safety engagement team, I think everybody knows who they are. They're absolutely vital to our success. Their main goal is, uh, they're the foundation of the team's success is based on their developing human connection with those engaged with on a daily basis, using a balanced approach to compassion and accountability. So in 2024, they refer two hundred and twenty-three individuals to services. Those services included substance use disorder, mental health, housing, employment, getting birth certificates and other documents they need to further their lives and get the other stuff that they can. getting birth certificates and other documents they need to further their lives and get the other stuff that they can use to better their lives, as well as peer support. They only wrote ten fifty-one-fifty holes. We had fourteen hundred and seventy-one mental health calls for service last year, and CSET of the ones that they handled only wrote ten holes, which is huge. That's a ninety-eight percent diversion rate. So that's ninety-eight percent of people that did not get tied up in SV, did not tied up in our ER, taking up a bed, or other services at that time. They removed more than a hundred thousand pounds of trash from our green belts and waterways, as well as tagged two hundred and twenty-seven different camps, and a hundred and twenty-three of those were cleaned up. They handled about thirty-three percent of all EPD's mental health calls. Their main thing, though, is to be proactive in their approach, so while they handled that many calls, their seventy-seven percent of their activity is proactive versus reactive, waiting to get those calls. So they're out there in the community every day, on the streets, engaged with the community members needing assistance. So mental health, we all know, definitely has a significant impact to the city of Eureka and the county as a whole. To reduce the impacts on local hospitals and get individuals to help, they need to live successful lives. The department has a progressive approach to mental health calls. This includes training our patrol officers and having specialized officers within CSET, as well as the development of the crisis alternative response of Eureka, the care team. You can see in what's important about this graph here is since 2020, the number of mental health calls for service have gone up until 2023. Unbelievable, we still had the exact same number this year. But what you see going down is the number of fifty-one-fifty holds, and that is the testament of the officers, CSET, the training we're getting, and trying to refer individuals that need this help to other resources that we have to better address their needs, to have better outcomes. So even from a patrol standpoint, they handled, they wrote ninety-five fifty-one-fifty holds. Theirs are going to be a lot higher than CSET, just because they're working twenty-four-seven. There's not the same resources available to graveyard officers as there is during CSET's time during the day, but they still were able to find ninety-three percent diversion rates to keep people from going to the hospital out of the total number of calls that they handled. So they did a great job. Our school resource officer, Ryan Flowers, started this year in June. We handled or responded to six hundred and eighty-nine calls for service at the schools within the jurisdiction of Eureka. While that part of his salary is paid through Eureka City Schools, we don't not approach or address issues at other educational facilities within the city. So he addresses issues at all those and is an asset to all those. A lot of these calls, though, are also just patrol checks, foot patrols of our officers going out and self-initiating that activity to go on campuses throughout our city to check on children and make sure that everything is going well. Our criminal investigations unit handled eight suspicious deaths, sixty-one violent crimes, twenty sex crimes, fifteen crimes against children, twenty property crimes. They're called out eleven at times for agency assist and dealt with twenty-seven missing persons that were referred to them. It's over a hundred and sixty cases they worked last year. Some of their most notable are on the left there. Those were all in 2024. Their investigations got over a hundred and eleven years of sentenced times for these very violent, very disturbing individuals that committed crimes in our city. Our property section is run by a supervisor and one employee and one part-time employee. They're still storing property back to nineteen forty-six, so we're required to keep any homicide, any sexual assault evidence forever. So that's when we started storing property, and so we still have those cases there. In 2024, processed approximately five thousand pieces of evidence through those investigations. Stored over ten terabytes of digital evidence, so with all the body camera footage, all the surveillance footage now we have, that is all evidence that we have to store and keep. And then we probably have more than, I know we have more than a hundred pieces of actual evidence or property in our property section within your EPD. So it is a mountain of work that is constantly being addressed through purging. So we are allowed to purge cases when things are cleared through courts, but it takes time to clear all those investigations and then get the property, and try to balance that with the amount of intake we're doing, so trying to keep our storage area manageable. We have taken an undertaking of reorganizing the entire room. What you see is those white totes. That's all new. We started late 2023, 2024. And by organizing those, barcoding them with the system we have, we've been able to create a lot more space, a lot better tracking. We've taken all our serious crimes, all our homicides, rapes, things we can't get rid of. There are now being stored in the same kind of white totes, but behind an extra-secure door that we just don't have to move them anymore. We put them back there. We know they're going to be there for life, and they're now secured behind a different area, but just clears up a lot more space for us in our main property room. Vehicle abatement. So we had a total of fifteen hundred and eighty-one calls for vehicle abatement complaints. We tagged nine hundred and sixty-five vehicles last year. Of those, we had a sixty-nine percent compliance rate, so that means that after the tag went on the vehicle, they either contacted us, we made arrangements to not tow their vehicle because there was some underlying story behind, or they just automatically complied, moved the car, not realizing that it was a violation of the law. We towed two hundred and ninety-nine cars. We recovered, our part-time abatement employee recovered sixteen stolen vehicles as part of this process and dealing with vehicles through abatement. Some items of interest, we towed twenty-nine motorhomes, nine trailers, four boats, a motorcycle, two jet skis, and four boat trailers. And that was all done by a part-time employee working twenty hours a week. Like we talked about a little bit in the other section, Crisis Negotiation Team and SWAT Team are both regional teams that are run under the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. We have one member of our department that is a crisis negotiator that works for CNT, as well as our CSET team, and then we have two operators and a tactical dispatcher on the SWAT team. So Eureka Police and Humboldt Bay Fire Communication Centers handles all police fire and medical calls within the city limits of Eureka and fire and medical calls for the greater Eureka area. This is the current list of dispatchers we have to include a couple of officers that have been cross-changed or work in dispatch to help with the vacancies to help from their burnout and cover some of their overtime. Can you go to the next slide, Pam, please? So again, we had fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-six calls for service for police that they entered. They took twenty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-eight nine-one-one calls and over eighty-three thousand in-going and outgoing phone calls in and out of the center. The nine-one-one calls, their average ninety-eight point seven point four percent of the time was answered in less than ten seconds. Ten seconds may sound like a lot, but we have two dispatchers on. They work twelve-hour shifts, and if we have one crash on Broadway, and there may be five nine-one-one calls come in, they're not going to get all five of those within a second, a second and a half. So a couple of those are going to ring a little bit longer. That's why we get that long as a center, ten seconds, and we're doing really well. On the right, those are just the averages broken down for calls that you can see for a month that they handle. Average fire calls for a month are two hundred and ninety-two, average medical calls, five hundred and ninety-eight, and the rest of them are already figured out in the other higher numbers. During 2024, we had a dispatcher complete her communication training officer certification, as well as we have two seniors and another dispatcher who now are working as trainers within the department. We're currently, like I said, three positions down. The training program is twenty-one weeks long to get proved to do both medical and fire policing, or dispatching. And then we currently have three people, four people in backgrounds, but we're still going to be recruiting because our success rate to even get through backgrounds is probably less than twenty-five percent, and then it's probably less than fifty percent of those we put into the actual training program are successful. So we're constantly looking for good applicants in this process. Our records division was an exciting year for them, very productive year. It's marked by hiring a new specialist and then our first year with the new manager, Christina Laramore. It was an incredibly busy year. You can see the stats below. They had fifty-seven hundred people come into the front office to do either report crimes, live scans, two ninety registrants, and that's on top of they had, they answer our main line for our business line. And then you can see all the other work they do as far as reports are processed and all the reporting requirements they have at the bottom there. We are excited that we did hire a records technician at the beginning of the year, so they are fully staffed for the first time in a long time. So that's really going to help with the workload and the expansion of their training and things they can do. So just to cover our complaints for the year. EPD, I can document at least a hundred and seventy-three thousand interactions with members of our community, and that's across all boards of our records division, dispatch, officers in the field, calls for service. I know there's tens of thousands or more because every time we go to a community event and we have a conversation with somebody, that's an interaction. That could create a complaint. So those are undocumented, but I can say for sure, a hundred and seventy-three thousand. Of those, we only received eighteen external complaints. That's complaints coming in from members of the community. Of those eighteen external complaints, they all were found to be unfounded, which means that they didn't happen at all, and we were able to prove these through the investigation and body camera, or not sustained, which means there was not a fifty-one percent burden of proof that the incident actually happened, and we couldn't sustain any violations. If you break that number down over the number of eighteen complaints externally, that's like, you can see it up there. It rarely happens if you break it down, the number of interactions, it's point zero one zero percent of the time somebody makes a complaint. And when you put that number to it, eighteen may sound high for an agency of, you know, thirty-five, thirty-six officers right now, but when you look at that number of contacts, your officers are out there doing great work and being great community ambassadors for the city of Eureka. I do want to say that all those complaints, internal and external, all those reports were reviewed by the independent police auditor, who not only confirms the investigations and that the complaints came in, they're also confirm that the investigations are thorough and complete. They report those out to the COP Board quarterly, which is our community oversight on police practices board. And you can find all those reports and all those things online under those previous COP Board things. And I really want to thank the IPA for their assistance throughout 2024 because they've been vital for a lot of this hard work and helping the department move forward in a way that is definitely seen by council and our community. Our police operation analyst, Jackie Tickleopolis. Her position is responsible for policy updates. She's our training manager, training coordinator. She does backgrounds and hiring with, like, working with our background investigators, and then she helps oversee our grants. In 2024, she helped coordinate over four thousand and fifty-eight training hours for our personnel within the department. We've also brought on a couple of different technology systems, LFTA, law enforcement training applications. This is a system that allows our field training officers, our field training supervisor, to do daily observation reports on those in the training program. It's all digital. They can track that better this way, see the areas of improvement that's needed. So it helps the SAC guide the FTOs in the next training, as well as the management employee training records, which is a part of the program that we're still testing, but it does help with getting training applications in, managing our time, managing our resources. She was also vital in creating the sleeping quarters for the department. We are not firefighters, and I mean no disrespect to firefighters. We don't sleep on duty. However, I have officers that live outside the city of Eureka. They get off at six-thirty in the morning. They have to be back at court at nine o'clock. They would rather stay there and find a place to sleep instead of drive home and have to turn around and drive right back. So we actually created a space in one of our storage rooms, large room, two beds. Cooperation from the Coast Guard gave us some bedding, beds, dressers that they were getting rid of after a remodel, so she did a great job of liaising with them and making this happen for our officers. Our police operations analyst, budget analyst, who handles our budget, handles any and all financial-related items to Eureka Police Department, this is Rachel Solomon. So she not only oversees our budget, but she also oversees our grants, and these are the grants that we received in 2024. The Patrick Larry Bulletproof Fest grant pays for fifty percent of Bulletproof Fest that we purchase each year. We pay the other fifty percent. Our ABC grant, OTS, we'll talk about both of those in a minute, and our JAG grant. Projects she helped complete this year, which were vital or at least working on, so we're going to utilize a system called COP Logic. This is online crime reporting for our citizens. So you will be able to report non-suspect crimes that sometimes don't get reported because you don't want to, people don't want to bother a cop, don't have the time. They can now fill this out on their own, send it to us. So we'll probably get better records of actual crimes that are committed. Lighthouse, which is our employee wellness app. We did remodel our community service officer office, as well as our field training officer office.
If I could just stop you for one moment. We have a point of order. It is nine-thirty, and I do need a motion to extend the meeting.
I'd like to move that we extend the meeting to ten PM and not go that late.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
I will speed this up then. You can see our ABC grant that we received in 2023, 24. You can read that at your leisure on the different kinds of operations we did throughout that time, as well as where the money was spent. Our traffic of officer, traffic of officer, traffic safety grant, where that money was awarded and spent. We're applying for both of those again for the twenty-four, twenty-five cycle. Our reserve officers, we have three, Mike Stephen, Eddie Wilson, and Chandler Baird. Remember, this is 2024. Chandler actually works for us now as a full-time officer, and kind of what they did throughout the department. Both Mike and Eddie work in our background investigations, do our backgrounds, as well as Eddie does a lot of our internal affairs investigations. And Chandler was just a jack-of-all-trades to assist the department in all aspects, both of overseeing grant operations, as well as filling in vacancies on patrol. We have a great core group of volunteers that volunteered over six hundred and fifty hours in 2024. Barbie Fields won our 2024 Volunteer of the Year in April. Just some of the duties that they are responsible for listed there at the bottom. Can you read those on your own? They're truly an asset to our department and our city and great people, and I'm so happy to have them. Our peer support team, this is a team, a specialized group within our department that provides emotional and practical support to police officers and staff dealing with unique challenges of their profession. These teams are designed to help officers cope with stressors and mental health challenges associated with police work, including exposure of traumatic events, high-stress situations, and demands of the job. These are our new employees we hired in 2024. Our recruiting efforts, just some of the in-house things we did to help recruit. We really pushed hard on social media this year for recruiting. I think it really had a big impact. I do want to thank our HR department, Sarah, Will, Emily, all the folks down there, because they truly supported this effort, and were just great along the whole process of trying to get people hired, and the parts they have to deal with are absolutely fantastic for us. We appreciate that. And obviously, we have, you know, we take part in a lot of community events, Shop with a Cop, the Roadie Parade, our markets, blood drives, Hoops and Heroes, serving food with Betty for dinners at Thanksgiving and Christmas, Halloween events, the Special Olympics torch run, as well as many others. And so the last page, our acknowledgements. We want to thank the city staff of 2024. I know there's a change going into 2025. We'll thank you next year. Appreciate you. But everyone helps out a lot. All the employees for the city of Eureka are making our mission possible, our council, to the many members of our community and organizations that stand behind us always and help us. We're thankful for that. And I really want to thank our first responder agencies that always show up to help us, as well as my staff. This was the first time we've done this report that I can remember in quite a while. It kept growing as we were doing it. I actually finished it at five o'clock today. I started a month and a half ago, so it took a while, but the hard work of not only my command staff and my PIO to put this together, and hopefully it was a presentation that was informative for you and for our community, and appreciate it. So I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Chief Stevens? That was a very thorough report. Oh, Councilmember Moulton.
I just wanted to thank you, of course, for that thorough three reports, and I'm happy to hear that the officers who need to stay the night in the station are no longer sleeping on a cot in the gym, which is where they were before, yeah. So it's good to hear. Thank you.
Councilmember Bauer.
No, I want to thank you and, you know, the whole department for the work you guys do. It's underappreciated, and I mean, I think it's a testament to, to, you know, how you're doing by the mental health issues, right, that you've managed to divert so many people away from the hospital. And I do have a question about that. So what are, kind of what's the process, since we're not doing what we used to do, right, and send them to St. Joe's? How are we effectively managing those situations?
A lot of the individuals that they're running into on a daily basis have resources already for them. They are clients of someone. The care team knows how to get them resources. So it's phone calls now we're making, or putting them in a car and driving them someplace that we know that can actually provide them the assistance. They don't need to go to SV. Their issue is not a danger to themselves or others today. It's an issue that needs to be resolved through additional resources that we have. So a lot of phone calls happen between those that are experts in that field and those that may know this person, and they take that information, they run with it, drive them, put it in better hands, and we move on.
Thank you, and thank you for the great report.
Anyone else?
Well, I want to share my appreciation too for all the great work that you guys do, and, you know, it's a, it's a different department. It's really, you know, when we, when I started on council to now, there's been just so much positive that has changed, and I just, I really appreciate the department and their ability and their desire to make so many great connections with our community, because that's how we continue to thrive, is by connection and learning to know each other. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Oh, Council, Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
It's okay, chief. I didn't have a question. I just, I just had a comment. I was just going to say thank you. I was waiting until we were done with questions, and anyway, I was just going to say thank you.
We are going to take public comment on this item, though.
Is it an action item?
Is it an action item?
No, but it's reports and action items. We always take a public comment on reports.
So you want me to?
No, you can go. No, I apologize. I just wanted to be clear.
I just, I was gonna echo it. Councilmember Moulton said earlier just how much that I wish that, you know, oftentimes the crowds that come at the beginning of meetings, that they would stay through the whole meeting and get to hear reports. I really appreciate the thorough reports, chief. And I thought that was pretty funny that you guys started a month and a half ago and just finished at five, but it's very thorough, and I really appreciate it. And I feel like in a lot of ways, we just kind of got a state of the union for our police department, which I think is really helpful and really great. And I hope people go back and review it and review the video of this. So it was very helpful and very informative. I appreciate all the good work you're doing. I'm blown away at how much recruitment efforts have paid off. I'm just astounded that you guys have made that much headway in the period of time that you have. And, and I got to talk to an officer tonight that said that they wanted to come back and took a cut in pay just so they could be with EPD again because they just really loved EPD that much and love serving our community. I love hearing stuff like that. I mean, I'm sorry you took a cut in pay, but I love hearing just, I know there's so many dedicated staff, so I really appreciate all of you.
Thank you. And so we will open this item up to public comment. So anyone with the public who'd like to come and share? No? But thank you. I'm seeing the crowd is very pleased with this. They're giving the silent hand claps.
We do have someone on Zoom. Free. Go ahead. Oh, did they disappear?
I noticed earlier there were two people that were still on there, and I wasn't clear if they were a public comment at the end.
Freed, are you still there?
They're still there and unmuted, but.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks so much. I'm, I'm really glad that I did stay on to sit through all of this because I have a much different experience than it seems like all of you on the council. So as somebody who's witnessed police violence and also been a victim of police violence, I have some questions. And I did take notes, but Chief Stevens kind of moved through them really quickly. So the first thing he mentioned was military equipment, and I'm just wondering why Eureka Police Force would need military equipment. Also asking about needing more officers. If we have thirty-six officers on staff already, I'm just wondering why we need more. As far as the pepper ball launchers go, we have seven of them. And I was wondering what their authorized uses are because that went really quick to training, if they're used in training, but they're never been used in actual, I guess, quote unquote, police service, why do we need them? Oh, but you did use them to shoot at that one person who was coming down at you. Okay. Maybe not. I don't know why we would need seven. Let's see. It went really fast for those uses on the slide, so it would be great if maybe ahead of time this could be given to us. I know you said you didn't finish it until five o'clock, so I understand that, but I'd love to read that report. Let's see, the Acts Beyond the Peaceful Demonstration should be a public document. I'm looking forward to reading that. If you have somebody in the attic that, that you're needing to shoot pepper spray up at, I'm wondering if they're in the attic, why can't you just wait them out? It would be awesome if you are going to work on, let's see, de-escalation tactics. So you're talking about there's money in the budget already that you want to spend on weapons, so you don't need to ask for that. If we already have the weapons and you're not using them in service, why can't we just use money on more de-escalation tactics and training? As far as the cameras go, there's only two people that are viewing the recordings, so I'm wondering if we have an oversight committee on that who has access to the cameras more than just two cops, because honestly, I don't trust cops. You said that cameras deter the crime, but you don't have any data on that except for people saying that they feel safer about it, so that's not actually data. Also, it's eight thousand dollars a month, and you only use it three to four times a year. That seems really, really excessive. Thank you so much. I look forward to reading all of those documents.
Thank you, Free. Do you see anyone else?
I see no one else on Zoom.
So we'll close the public comment. And Chief, didn't you say that report will be available online?
Yes, they will always be posted.
They can also watch the video. Great. Thank you so much. All right. Well, that leads us to city manager, or future agenda items. Excuse me. Anybody have any? Councilmember Castellano?
You know, just in light of, and it's understandable, you know, a lot of folks don't come to every city council meeting. And so some of the things that folks have had questions about tonight were part of prior council meetings. In particular, I'm curious about, this is just the only place where I could think to throw this in there, like a brochure that, that tells about the homeless services that the city provides that we could have here at City Hall, but could also, I think, be a resource in terms of, you know, officers who are on the street or our mental health clinician team and things like that. Could we get a brochure that explains those services? It could be a presentation too, again, if we need it to be a future agenda item.
Okay, so we have consensus on this, or two, three, four?
We can definitely do a brochure, and that's fine, and we can do that if council directs staff to do that. We also have the update on the Homeless Action Plan, as well as the Homeless Action Plan, and that could serve as that. We have the presentation now as a part of that update for the Homeless Action Plan, and we can make that available either online or even printed copies to do so, or the action plan itself and the update that we just provided recently, which has all of the services that we're providing.
A question then about what I just thumbs dumped. Do you mean for the public to understand or for the public experiencing homelessness to gain access to resources in a way that doesn't require them to have a cellphone?
Both?
Those are, I think those are two separate communication tools. I'm in favor of either or both.
I mean, I think both would be useful. I don't know if right now we need to figure that out.
So to speak to that, I believe that we do have cards with services listed that people can pass out to people that are out, that are homeless or homeless.
We do have that as well, but if it's more of a synopsis of all of our programs, we can provide that as well.
Everybody good? Okay, any other agenda items? We'll move on to city manager report. City manager's letter.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and council. I just wanted to add to the acknowledgements. I know the chief is very humble, but I think that the status of our police department and where we're at right now is indicative of the leadership, and I really want to thank him for getting us where we're at today, and it's been really impressive working with him over the last few years. For my city manager's report, I was out of town last week dealing with health issues with my mom, but also was at a city manager's conference down in Rancho Mirage. Other than keynote speaker and the general sessions, I attended three different sessions. One was on disaster preparedness and mass casualties. Another was on a new version of Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, and the other one was on homelessness. I think that through all of those, I think that the city's in a really good spot. I think we're far ahead of the rest of the state, even big municipalities. We do have a lot to learn as a result, as disaster preparedness is concerned, and I'll bring that back to staff and have more discussions with them about that. As it relates to the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, we had brought this back to council at the request of Councilmember Castellano. There's a new infrastructure financing district that's available now related to sustainability and resiliency. And I attended with this city manager Perry from Arcata, and will likely explore that opportunity. It allows you to create these infrastructure financing districts to address sea level rise and those type of things. And because we don't get a lot of money from property taxes, that was one of the reasons why. But if we partner with the county and Arcata and other agencies, I see some opportunities for our wastewater infrastructure. We'll see sea level rise, and so we'll talk about that. As it relates to homelessness, it was really impressive. We had presentations from the city of Long Beach, the city of Sacramento, as well as Whittier, California, all communities with a lot more resources than we have. And I will say that through all of the explanations and the, and the conversations back and forth, we are far in advance of a lot of these communities. What was really interesting is the city of Long Beach, as well as the city of Sacramento, actually declared an emergency to deal with their homeless situation. They enacted their emergency operations center, met weekly with, believe it or not, Long Beach has twenty-three departments, and they met weekly over a multiple-year period. A lot of the things that they learned, we've already done and enacted. We actually are further ahead as it relates to mental health response. It was interesting that of all of those, as well as through the discussion of all the other city managers, many of them have done authorized encampments. Those authorized encampments throughout all of the different agencies did not fare well, and it was very much a consensus of that through our experience as well, that that was due to the lack of administration, and it wasn't necessarily that they were bad for the community itself. It was bad for the folks that were in those communities. And so without any sort of administration, it, it didn't do very well. Sacramento had a situation where a property was, I don't know what the right term, but anyway, a lot of people started staying at that property. They tried to work with the folks that were staying there, tried to work on an MOU with those folks, ended up in a lawsuit and a forceful eviction of people on that property. And it was very difficult. Whittier had a similar experience. It didn't end up in a lawsuit, but it ended up in a forceful eviction. What they ended up doing is they used some of their general fund monies. Once again, these agencies have a lot more resources than us, but they established their own shelter space and developed criteria to determine where individuals were from, and if they could have demonstrated connection to Whittier, they would house them and would not house other people from outside of that area, and resulted in enforcement on that. The other interesting thing is Long Beach, I'm sure you're all aware of the Home Key, where you get grants. They applied for one or two, received that. They spent millions of dollars over the past five years to convert motels and hotels into tenant situations and for home, for housing for folks. They created well over fifteen hundred units for folks to inhabit, and they kept track of their point-in-time count over that period, and their population decreased only two percent. And through the discussions with them, it was very clear in a simulation, a similar situation as us, that they were the one community within the surrounding region that only had these resources. And so they were seeing a lot of people that they were housing, but at the same time, people coming in and taking advantage of those services. And so they really feel that a region-wide approach in order to address these things will, will, will spread the responsibilities for each of the communities. And so it was interesting that they put, I think it was sixteen hundred and seventy units over a three-year period, and did not see it move the needle very much, and they feel it's because of the surrounding areas. Either some of them, obviously, in Southern California situation, not actually passing ordinances for people not to have shelters and those type of things. So quite interesting, a lot more resources, but I'm extremely proud of where Eureka is and what we've done. We're, we're, we're far ahead of the curve, and actually, our staff probably should have been giving the, the session on that because I think that we're really far ahead as far as understanding and having the balance between compassion and accountability. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for city manager's letter? I know we have eight minutes left, but I do have one question myself. So I'm curious about Whittier being able to.
I'm not saying that's legal, and I did not consult with our city attorney, but their, their interpretation of it was that if they're using their tax dollars to support a shelter, that they can establish criteria to determine whether or not people are from that town and only provide shelter space to those folks that meet that criteria. I don't think that that's, I'm not recommending that in any way. It was just interesting because they'd been through so many different programs to try and address this issue, and that's what they ended up coming up with.
Interesting. We'll have to talk about that later. Thank you.
And by the way, we do not have the resources necessary to, to start our own shelter.
Well, I just remember that we had talked about doing something, a lot of people had talked about doing something similar, like with our housing, with the new housing that came in with the lodge and other places, that we could not say if you're out of, from out of town, we're gonna prioritize somebody local first.
Like I said, I don't know about the legality of it, but they are definitely doing that, and the city manager was very proud of it.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Wow. Moving on to public comment, so we did have to close public comment early, and I know that there were a couple of commenters still online. Do you still see those? Shan?
We do. Free?
Thank you again. It kind of feels like we're all living in two different worlds because earlier I heard people talking about the way that our houseless population is treated by the police in Eureka. So I'm here really to voice my opposition to any increased police presence in encampments. More police are never the answer. I'm also vehemently opposed to the idea of making it illegal to camp or sleep in public or increasing the citation to a misdemeanor. So we know Eureka's original and true name, Jarro Gigi, means a place to sit and rest, which is in the Salatluck language, the Wiat language. If your council is truly acknowledging the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations, as you say you do in your land acknowledgement, then I'd like to ask you, what would the Wiat do? How do they treat their most vulnerable peoples? Those of us who are working actively to make safe communities know that a safe community is a strong community, and we are only as strong as our most vulnerable population. So sweeping our houseless neighbors away, fining and jailing them is not only the wrong answer, it is exactly what a settler and a colonizer would do. You say you're committed to dismantling the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. However, supporting policies like this are actively continuing and uplifting it.
Thank you, Free.
Fox.
Excuse me, we are gonna have to extend the meeting. We have four minutes.
I moved to extend the meeting to ten ten.
Thank you.
Second.
Please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. And it looks like Fox.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Wanted to say, also speak on the sweeps regarding the houseless community. Wanted to say that Elon Musk makes about thirty-two point four to thirty-nine point four million dollars per day, or twenty-two thousand five hundred per minute. His wealth is all from exploitation and slavery and ecocide, and yet he is not considered a criminal. It's people like him that create the conditions that have us fighting each other, fighting for resources, and climbing all over each other to survive. I've seen studies examining the costs of housing around house neighbors and can be less than harassing and fining and jailing and displacing and trying to erase them. The federal powers currently are destroying so many rights and protections for people on the planet that I can't begin to list. And I wanted to ask, how do we resist that, and how do we bring a better world into existence? We have to take care of each other. We have to take care of our most vulnerable. That's the homeless. That's our neighbors that ICE is targeting. We have to take care of each other. We have to take care of our most vulnerable. That's the homeless. That's our neighbors that ICE is targeting, our trans friends, our youth. In twenty twenty-three, Nancy Barnes died on the steps of Arcata City Hall in the middle of winter. You can't disappear people. If you look into the symptoms and if you look past the symptoms and look to the source, it's capitalism and colonization. And we just really need to focus on resisting that and thinking outside the system and remaking it. Thank you.
Thank you, Fox.
E?
Hey there. I'm in agreement with the two folks that spoke before me and folks that spoke in support of our unhoused neighbors earlier, really just uplifting the need for consideration and respect of our unhoused neighbors. And even though doing sweeps is normalized, it's, it's extremely not normal, and it's not humane. And just because it's a common practice, don't let that fool you into going along with it as if that's a decent way to treat one another. And I understand that there's a concern about the public perception of Eureka, and folks want it to be pretty and look good, but creating a pretty public image that requires pushing out and slowly killing off neighbors is really disingenuous. And I understand, as I say that, some of you might say, no, we agreed that we're going to have folks trying to figure out what we're going to do. But in the meantime, we just heard a police report talking about a hundred and twenty-three camps cleaned up, which if that's not a super gross euphemism, I don't know what is. You can't take away people's things. And I would say that it's increasingly inhumane. The more, the less somebody has, the more inhumane it is to take from them, the less resources someone has to replace that item. So like, you might lose your iPhone, and it would be a total pain in the ass, but you'd figure it out. That you can't like take things from people that can't replace them. It's extra cruel, you know? So I hear you all that you're figuring out what to do, and that's great. And in the meantime, we can't take away people's things. And we just can't act like that's a normal practice. We've lost our humanity if we treat each other that way. Thank you so much. Oh, and I guess I also just want to say, with the last little bit of time I have, I heard you all talking about cleaning up. Sorry, it's late. My, my brain's getting slow, but some of the tagging around town, and one of the examples that you showed was a piece that someone had written, Fuck Twelve. And I just want to name, like, I hope you all are considering the messages that are actually being scrolled on the walls of the city. That means fuck the police. So you have like communication that might not be in a channel that is like state sanctioned, that you enjoy, but you have community members saying what they don't like about the place they live in some of those writings. So you might want to consider the messages that are being conveyed before just covering them up. Thank you.
Thank you, E. Do you see anyone else?
I see no one else on Zoom.
Great. So we will close public comment and move on to council reports, and we will start with Councilmember Castellano.
Thanks. Let's see. I attended the Eureka Main Street Meeting, the Eureka Chamber Government Relations Meeting, where along with City Manager Slattery, we shared what we're doing in the City of Eureka regarding housing, as well as kind of gave it, gave an overview of things happening throughout the county. I attended the solidarity, solidarity gathering yesterday at the courthouse, the Humboldt Waste Management Authority Meeting, and the Humboldt Transit Authority Meeting. And so my mind is that I think there's some misinformation going around in terms of people taking other people's belongings through the police. I just want to say that's not happening, and you know, things I think are, anyway. Happy to talk to anyone outside of these chambers and clear up misinformation.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, Mayor. I also encourage people to get in touch via phone or email. Lots of folks come up to the microphone here and ask questions that we, by practice, don't answer during Q and A. But there are answers, and we're happy to give them and have these conversations. I have no travel to report, but I did attend the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District Special Meeting regarding securing the permanent allocation of the water rights on the Mad River. What a crazy bureaucracy water rights are, oh my God. But good to see that the health of the river and the health of the watershed is first and foremost in, in that long and very involved process. Got to meet Officer Tag, our new Old Town Officer. Good to have somebody out there who can connect directly with businesses and folks in Old Town. A lot of times, people just need to be heard. I served on jury duty, which took a while. I missed the JPA meeting for Humboldt Bay Fire due to illness. Sure, that was great. And I just wanted to encourage people to attend a meeting regarding the transportation, public transportation, bike and pedestrian impacts of the Sunset Heights development. That is the bluff between, like Fairview there, between Harris and Henderson, where there's, excuse me? Fairfield, thank you. I said Fairview. Thank you. Fairfield, between Harris and Henderson. That is February twenty-fourth at Alice Burney, six-thirty to seven-thirty. That's on the city's website. And also another meeting in addition to that on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, February twenty-sixth, at twelve PM on Zoom. So if you can't make the in-person one on Monday, the twenty-fourth, maybe you can make the Zoom one in the afternoon on the twenty-sixth. And that's going to be talking about the impacts to public transportation and pedestrian safety and bicyclists around the Sunset Heights development. So I got something to say. That'd be a great place to say it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
So there was a meeting with the chamber today that unfortunately I was unable to attend because of scheduling conflict with work. But for Councilmember Moulton, I think it was last week, the Humboldt Bay Fire Two by Two, I attended on your behalf. And so Chief Citro had given his report. We were told about the accolades that we received from CR because of the donation of some equipment for their program. They're having some issues, I believe it is, with getting the program for firefighting. Just getting that off the floor at the moment because of some issues with some state permitting and such. But it should be, I think, going forward by this summer. I attended a meeting at the Eureka City Schools, or I attended the meeting that Eureka City Schools had for their board. They had a school safety update on there that I was interested. But I think what was most interesting was that they're moving forward with a waiver process for the Jacobs property and going potentially for a request for a proposal as they continue negotiations with CHP. And then, much like the mayor, I participated in the same event hosted by the Sisters of Perpetual Doldgence this last weekend, fundraising for Planned Parenthood, and then also attended a rally at the courthouse yesterday.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I attended RCEA Finance Committee Meeting. I was elected chair for RCEA, so I'm excited about serving that organization in that capacity. I attended the JPA meeting, and Councilmember Fernandez covered all the issues we discussed there. I also attended the Loca Open House, and I just want to shout out to independent media. We need them more than ever, so it was great to see everybody there and, and hang out their new, their new digs. Planted trees this weekend with Keep Eureka Beautiful. We had a couple of gentlemen from the mission come and help. Appreciate their hard work. They were, they really helped us get it done pretty quick, and we planted a bunch of street trees, so it was great. And I will be leaving in less than twenty-four hours for CalCity's Board of Directors Meeting. I'll report back. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember Conchera Stiloz?
Yeah, so I attended the Eureka Main Street Mixer. I also, I wanted to hear Chief Citro's report, so I attended just the beginning of the JPA meeting and got to be a fly on the wall for ten minutes or whatever it was. I also went to a ribbon cutting. I got to do Pathway to Payday again. You guys know I'm a regular at that. I love it. I love it so much. I love getting to see all these people who, some of them start out very hopeful, but some of them start out feeling very beaten down and just kind of watching them kind of gain some hope and faith in themselves over the course of the week. And I, I love it. It may be my just absolute favorite part of what we get to do. Anyway. And then, let's see, I can't read my own writing. Former Mayor Susan Seaman had reached out to me and asked me to participate in something called Week of the Young Child. So that was something that we started a few months ago, and they had me take over the Facebook page recently, and then we're starting to do meetings on that. It was something she was involved in, and she and I share a love of children, and so she had reached out to me and talked with me about that. And so I'm really excited to be participating in that and talking about how to, you know, elevate their, their lives. So those are my thingies.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. We have two minutes left. Anything further? We're adjourned. Thank you.